But I'd like to call the meeting to order. Town of Southbridge Joint General Government Subcommittee Town Council Meeting. Wednesday, August second, twenty twenty-three at six thirty. We're immediately filing ZPW in Veterans Room. Uh, this is being recorded by audio and video. Agenda item number one, call to order. Agenda item number two is roll call. Uh, Councillor Dow.
Here.
Councillor Marchetti.
Present.
Councillor Montigny is present. And Citizen Member, Mr. Clemens?
Present.
Present. And Citizen Member Kelly is not here. We have a quorum. Uh, agenda number three is review and discuss the town manager's appointment of Max Gallexon to the Cable Advisory Board for a three-year term effective immediately through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, pending completion of state ethics. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval. Come on.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Um.
Hey, Max.
Hey, Max. You missed the place? Yeah, right? I wanna.
Would you like to say anything? You wanna come up if you want? Max?
Hey. Basically, I was there a year and a half ago, as you all know, I used to work there. And the reason I wanna go back is I wanna make videos. I wanna start producing more videos again. That's my sole reason. Hi Denise.
Hi, how are you, Max?
Good, good. So I'm thinking of coming back if you're cool with it.
I heard.
Yeah, and that's my whole spiel, so.
That's awesome. Um, I just wanna say first that, you know, uh, Max has done a lot for the new age of cable about fifteen years ago. And I think it's a great fit, uh, for the Cable Advisory Committee to round off, uh, the full committee. Um, does anybody else have anything else? Mister Joe Dow, Councillor Dow?
Thank you very much for coming back.
Oh, you're welcome.
Uh, you do a lot for the Town of Southbridge.
Oh, appreciate you saying.
And, uh, we're glad you stand up and come back. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I think it'll be fun.
Thanks, that's awesome. All right. Well, no further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Thank you very much, Max. Uh, agenda item number four, review and discuss the request to use four hundred ninety dollars and sixty-two cents in fiscal year twenty-four funds from account number zero zero three one three five dash five eight nine zero zero dash eight one two one. Special appropriation ambulance billing to pay the remaining difference of the June FY twenty-three invoice balance not covered by previous transfer. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council for approval.
Come on.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
I'm just wondering what this, um, some kind of invoice we have here, and what, does this have something to do? This is in between Max and this one. Saying the next one is Comstar. I just was wondering what this is.
Right, and, uh, I believe the accountant is here. Is that you? I'm sorry. Would, we're, uh, I know you just walked in, but we're, had a question about the, uh.
So it does say Comstar at the top. And the total is eight, uh, three thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. According to this.
What are we on?
Yeah, because it's the remaining amount, I believe.
Yeah, I, um, is that key, um?
The ambulance?
Ambulance, yeah.
Ambulance billing?
Yeah.
So we only had April, May, we did not have the June billing. The account was short, so we did an estimate for the June bill. So I did a seventy-one hundred dollar transfer to cover the deficit and project out what we would need for June. And then the out, the mark, the, the two bills were, I think, twenty-three hundred dollars-ish for the two months. And then the June bill came in at over four thousand dollars. So I underestimated and I have a four hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-two cents shortfall that I didn't even use fiscal twenty-four funds for. Cause I underestimated. But I tried projecting over the June charges anyway. Estimated up at thirty-five hundred for June.
So it was, it was kind of like a, a.
It was a Hail Mary, but it was.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I was doing a Hail Mary for the June bill, cause we didn't have the information and we don't know what the charges are gonna be. Cause we don't know what we're gonna be billed from Comstar.
Right.
Cause it depends on the calls. So it's kinda like a Hail Mary when I did that budget.
Councillor Dow?
Thank you, Chair Tru. Thank you, uh, for paying less, not extra.
So I was doing a Hail Mary when I did that budget transfer for the end of the year, it just wasn't enough of one.
Um, and, and this is the same account that it would have normally been paid for anyway?
Correct.
Okay.
So I did a budget transfer for the seventy-one hundred dollars, that would've covered all the billing and just missed it all. So that was, um, the purchase order that I did. I just needed additional four hundred and four ninety-sixty-two, and that's all I needed to use for fiscal twenty-four funds.
Okay. Uh, Councillor Adams?
David, Chair, just a real quick, uh, quickly if I'm wrong. This will be a two-thirds vote at the Town Council if it goes up.
Is it four-fifths for previous years' bills?
It's a previous, it's a previous year.
It's a fiscal twenty-three bill.
I always thought, I always thought it was four-fifths.
We usually do two-thirds. So that lately I've been hearing four-fifths or ninety percent or whatever maybe, but we've always done two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
It's a two-thirds vote.
Gotcha. Sounds good. Um, does anybody else have anything else on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Um, would you like to entertain a motion, anybody to move?
Yes, I was gonna bring that up, Mr. Chair.
Number seven?
If I could, yeah, make that motion to move number seven and number eight actually, so that we could work on the items that
She's here.
probably won't. Yeah, those will be a little longer probably than what the other two items are, so if we can move six and seven down below, um, eight, nine, nine somewhere in there. I don't know about the audit even, how long that will take, probably not that long, but.
What are we doing?
Just move them down, so we can have, um.
So you wanna move seven and eight? So right now it's like.
I wanna move, I wanna move, um, five and six.
Yep.
Below, at least below eight. You know, I wanna move seven and eight up and five and six down.
Okay. Uh, so someone would like to second that?
Seven.
Okay.
I think the others are probably shorter.
I, I agree. Um, no discussion? All those in favor are moving those? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Okay, so we'll go right to agenda item number seven, which is review and discuss the fiscal year twenty-two in fiscal year twenty-three insurance overpayment and deficit and take any action thereof. Um.
Come on.
Okay, motion and a second. Um, I'm just gonna read a little bit about this. Um, Nor had sent me something that showed some very little numbers and, uh, I appreciate the clarity on some of the specifics of some numbers. But, uh, we're pretty much just trying to get to the bottom of what exactly happened, how it happened, why it happened. And most importantly, just so it doesn't happen again in the future. Um, but I will read to you the, um, email from Town Manager Blanchard. It says, uh, apparently this was the result of mistakes made over time in making sure that plan changes and employees leaving were properly reported to our insurer. He says, I believe some of this goes back to before the HR department was formed and that the turnover in personnel in the treasurer's office contributed to the problem. The review of the health insurance cost issue relating to increasing the town's share of the premiums to seventy percent that he did during the budget process is what brought the problem to their attention. And Adriana, Christine, and Nora worked together to correct these errors and obtain the credits as reported. And he said Nora will be keeping a close eye on this in the future. Um, I know we have the accountant here to answer questions. I know some councillors have lots of questions, but, uh. Councillor Shenier?
I kinda asked this to go forward with Councillor Marchetti. Uh, a few weeks ago, the accountant was here talking about capital expenditure to cover the overdraft, I mean, not the overdraft, the overpayment of insurance premiums, health insurance. And it kinda went over everybody's head when she brought that up. So after the meeting, I went and saw Charlie about it and Charlie confirmed to me that there was an error of a hundred and fifty, sixty thousand dollars that premiums were paid by the town for health insurance. But he did tell me that they were gonna recover back fifty-seven thousand, so it left a, uh, an overpayment of a hundred and nineteen thousand, some change. I may not have the numbers correct. So I said to him, how, how did this happen? So he, he told me he would get back to me, which he had, he had it. To the, to this point in time, he had to get back to me. So after doing a little bit more research and then talking with the accountant to get a better understanding of it, I also was made aware that this insurance overpayment happened in two thousand twenty-two also for, again, a large number of mu- of money. And during the budget process, council and, and for me were kinda led to believe that the problem that happened with the insurance was in twenty-two was a uh, changing over from sixty, forty, or whatever it was, to seventy, thirty. And that the cushion that it was in there took care of the over, the over, uh, payment. So it, it, it went nowhere, it just stopped there and I was still concerned about, geez, you're looking at maybe a couple hundred thousand plus dollars. So even to now, I, and like, got enlightened a little bit that how this worked was we had employees that left. We continued to pay their insurance premium, the full benefit, the full amount of their insurance. So like, for somebody like me, you know, by Medicare, it was a hundred and seventy, say, dollars and, and the town share would be a hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The town pays both those, uh, charges and recovers this, the employee's share of, uh, the hundred and seventy-eight bucks. So the town paid the bill for the town share and for the employee's share of people that were not here. And I was just amazed that this went on for so long and it wasn't caught until somebody new came into the picture, the accountant. And I'm gonna believe that some of this happened when they took the benefits. The insurance had run upstairs to HR and, but what bothers me is the fact that council was never notified of the exact cause of what happened. And to this day, still today, it's kinda led to believe that well, it was a mistake and there was no actual who, what, and where that happened. And so was my concern though, we spent all this money. We were unable to recover this money because the insurance company, if I understand it correctly, got paid for the full premium of the, the insurance premium of the employee, of the employees that were not working here. Now, the employee didn't know that he had that insurance being paid for and that his share was in there. There was one individual that worked for this community, I believe, that left in September. We paid sixteen thousand dollars of insurance premiums and we were only able to recover six. So I'm, I'm disenchanted with the way this whole thing evolved and I still haven't heard how we fixed, how we're gonna fix it. Or we're gonna watch, you know, we're gonna watch it, but to this day, the manager still hasn't, look at the answer that they gave you, it's the treasurer or this one. So I did ask the accountant to come and maybe she can better explain something than me, but I also wanna know what safeguards are put in place to prevent this from happening again. Cause it, and it may have happened even before twenty-two.
Okay. Well, um, would you like to add anything to that? The accountant?
So I can confirm, um, Melissa Zdowski, I believe, is how you pronounce her name. She was the treasurer collector.
Yep.
Um, she was the treasurer collector. Her final week here with the town was my first week here as the previous town accountant's assistant. Um, this summer, prior to her departure, she did have a full-on audit because the benefits were managed in her department. She had, and I did confirm this with the department, she had a full-on audit, benefits audit in that department and the bill was clean at that point.
And that was roughly when?
That was the summer of twenty twenty-one, as far as calendar year.
Okay.
So prior to her leaving in September of twenty-one, she had a full-on audit of the benefits that summer because she, they brought in, they brought in somebody to help with that. So that's when a full clean audit, it was, there was a clean slate at that point.
Okay, so there were no insurance problems the summer of twenty twenty-one?
Correct.
Okay.
So there was a full audit at that point and she was still there at, I'm understanding she was still there when Melissa had left, so it was, it was continuing throughout the summer.
When Melissa?
The end of the fall. And Melissa, uh, Melissa left September third, twenty twenty-one.
And then where did the treasurer responsibilities go to?
Um, and then we hired a replacement treasurer collector on September twentieth of twenty-one.
Okay.
And then a new, and that's when the Assistant Town Manager, Human Resources Director was hired November second of twenty-one. I just don't know the timeline of when the management of the benefits transitioned out of the treasurer's office into the HR department. I don't know when that transition happened as far as the date.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's nothing I was involved with as far as that transition of a timeline.
Right, I understand. Um, so do you happen to know the earliest date at which you found an error in the insurance, um, overpayment?
Um, I can say the earliest employee was six-thirty of twenty-one for the term date. Um.
You mean they, they left six-thirty twenty-one?
That is correct.
Okay.
And they kept paying?
That is correct.
Yep, uh, Mr. Clemens?
Whose, whose official job was it to notify the insurance company that we don't have these in place? Whose job, do we, does anybody know whose job that actually was?
Who's ever managing the benefits.
Who's ever managing the benefits?
Correct.
So treasurer was managing the benefits?
At one point, the treasurer's office was managing the benefits.
And then nobody was managing the benefits after?
When the HR department was formed, the benefits transitioned to that office. I don't know the specific date, the timeline of when that happened. I don't know if it went into full effect when that department was formed, or if there was a couple of months prior to that. I don't know if it happened in December, or if it was in January. I'm not sure of the date of when the full transition of the benefits management went to the HR department.
Right. But we hired HR November of twenty-one, but yet one of the people that stayed on insurance was June of twenty-one. So that was prior to ever starting anything with HR.
Right.
Correct.
So from there on, it's, it sounds like nobody was managing the benefits. Anybody who quit after that, or left, or, or was turned, or whatever, right? Is it, are we saying, did it happen to everybody? That, that changed out?
Nope, that was just, that, I was asked for the earliest date, that's the earliest date that was found.
Okay. And what's the latest date? Like, you know, what would be the, the last one to discover, to be discovered? You know, what timing, where we'd say the last person that might've, that was, we were paying for something that didn't exist? What was the last, do you have any idea?
The next one would be six-eight of twenty-three, which was fully recovered.
Six-eight twenty-three?
Correct, which was fully recuperated.
For, well, that's.
Wow, fooling.
So, but again, I asked, was it everybody who left in between or just some?
No, there was just, it wasn't ev- it wasn't ev- it wasn't all the employees that left that were a problem. It was just.
A few, or.
Do you know how many?
A handful.
Yeah, do you happen to know how many? Um.
I mean, cause we did have a lot of turnover in, in the last few years, so was it fifty percent?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Eighteen employees. And do you know how many were school? Not that that has anything to do with the school, I just know that this was a, a town-wide thing, uh.
Correct, but we managed the school better.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not trying to call out the schools, is what I mean, but do you know how many were school employees and how many were town employees? Just for the sake of.
Thirteen?
Thirteen town or thirteen school?
Thirteen school, maybe?
Okay.
I don't have all the departments for the town and the school memorized, so it's, I'm more familiar with the town employees, but I'm just gonna guess.
No, I understand, thirteen and five will say.
Well, school has more, there's more anyways.
Right, more turnover too. Um, Mr. Jovan?
Thank you. Through you, is there a certain, like, so we have, we know that was between June of twenty-one to June of twenty-three. Is there a particular time period that you had more, more employees that is targeted that it could've been this during period of time, or is it scattered throughout?
The dates.
No, I mean. I think it's something that I'll have to be, I'll have to analyze a little bit more to say, let's identify a pinpoint and then what are the mechanisms that we're gonna put in place to make sure it doesn't happen again. Uh, uh, you know, cause we, you have to look at that whole benefits area to how, should that be structured, who's collecting the money? Cause the money is coming back to the treasurer's office, right? And that, that, and who's managing the insurance? Because that always came out of the treasurer's office, right? Did, uh, Ms. Clemens?
Yeah.
I believe it always came out of the treasurer's office that they managed the, the insurance.
We didn't have, right, the, we didn't have the HR capabilities back in the, we had partials. But there's, isn't it just as simple as saying, okay, the employee left?
Yeah.
Makes the call and checks off the box that that call was made, like, it just seems like it shouldn't be like.
Exit paperwork.
Yeah, it is the part that, that doesn't sit well with me, cause in the end, like, taxpayer money was lost for, what seems like what Ms. Clemens is saying is just a really easy notification to avoid such a problem. Um, but I have, there's a couple people's hands up. Um, Councillor Adams?
Yeah, I would just say, obviously, there's a high rate of turnover, so something happened in there, but you know, there, obviously, there's nothing in this town that has a, how, how a new employee checks in and how a new employee, or an older employee checks out. So there should be a checklist for that employee if they're leaving, whatever it may be, so they check the box and then it goes, gets either to the town manager's office, or it was in HR, so they had that on file, that people initiated, that it's all been taken care of and it should be passed around. So I, I, it, but you're, I think, Councillor Shenier is right, I mean, there's still no real answer of how, how are we fixing this problem?
Um, the accountant, the accountant looked like she wants to answer directly to you.
If I can speak to that, um, my understanding is that the treasurer's office, when they managed the benefits, they did have a checklist. So I can't speak to the process of how, what happened when it transferred upstairs.
Right. And there is that unsettling part about the audit that was done over the summer, it's still not even spotting the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one first mistake. So, you know.
Or there, or there could be an underlying reason as far as why that person was on.
Right.
At that point in time and why they didn't get taken off. So that, that's something that could've fallen through the cracks and there could be an explanation for it.
Right.
It's just I don't have that explanation.
I understand.
But I'm sure if I had the chance to go to Nancy with that employee's name, I'm sure she'd be able to provide it, cause she was here at that time.
Right, I, I see. Um, Councillor Shenier?
I think if we look at some of the history of it, the majority of the problem happened when it was transferred from the treasurer's office to the upstairs office of HR. And it didn't follow the protocol that the treasurer was using. The treasurer had a, had a checklist, if you wanna call it. Where when it went from the treasurer's office to upstairs, to, to them to be the benefit coordinators, I guess, that's where it failed, was upstairs.
Mm-hmm.
And it failed for twenty-two and twenty-three.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, it's, it's just the fact that something went wrong and it needs to be fixed, so two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money just to say we made a mistake. You, you tell that to people out of the street, two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to those people out of the street. And this shouldn't happen. And what concerns me is when we took benefits, payroll, payroll went upstairs. I, 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 I hope there's no issue with payroll, but payroll went upstairs, insurance went upstairs.
No, payroll, payroll is still downstairs in the president's office.
Still downstairs?
Nancy still has that.
Okay. I thought there was one other thing that went upstairs, but.
No, and I, I, I hear what you're saying and too, uh, you know, like you said about the, the six-thirty, two thousand twenty-one, um, that person could've had, for instance, Cobra for three more months and it wouldn't have been part of the problem until after all of this turnover change, uh, and HR creation and stuff like that. So we really don't know. So it's like Mr. Jovan's point, we definitely need to analyze this more. Um, I, I, I'm upset about it too in terms of accountability. Uh, I mean, I, I'll entertain some more discussion while we have everybody here, but it's, it seems like this isn't something that'll get fully resolved tonight. Um, I just wanna go to Ms. Clemens first and then Ms. Farland in the back.
Thanks. Just, just curious, is there any software out there that can, um, employee-type software that has a flag system? You know, there, there's all kinds of great software out there. I'd be curious if there was some type of programming that, you know, your employees are in there, all their info's in there, sort of employees terminated, there would be a journey, there might be the, or, uh, flags that, that come up with certain, it's sort of like orders of operation, you know, perhaps there's something like that for HR or do you know, where each, each employee is managed, so to speak, there's, there's all the data on each employee and you know, oh, this one's terminated, oops, you know what I mean?
Our software does have.
Something like that?
Our, all, 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 all the employees are managed in our software that we have. I don't know if there's like a checklist.
Right, a check, a termination thing, yeah, where it's.
I don't know if there is per se in the software itself.
Hmm.
But I know the treasurer's office, when they managed, they had a printed-out checklist that they would fill out by employees who would check off down the list.
Right, right. And it's something that would say you did not, you know, I mean, I wonder if there's a way that, like, cause then it reminds you that you did not, you did not, this employee says terminated and something comes back saying you didn't, you didn't check off the part that said, like, your, that benefit, for instance, you know, like.
But the health insurance is a separate portal, it's a separate company, so that would be a separate spot. So I, at that point where there's different softwares that have to get touched to do, to deactivate employees per se, the best part to manage that would essentially be unfortunately a piece of paper where you're checking everything off and then doing a double check and then filing that in their employee personal file.
Yeah. Um, well, it seems simple, it's obviously personal mistakes.
Way to think as far as the piece of paper, but at the same time, it creates efficiencies, cause then you have to go back to it, it's there. If the checkmark isn't there, then it wasn't done. The checkmark is there and it wasn't done, well then, the checkmark is there showing it shouldn't have been.
Right, I guess I'm thinking of is that the software can handle that same situation where the person, you know, you were supposed to click and say that it was deactivated and it's gonna come back to you and say, this is not deactivated, this is, you know, there's gonna be like a.
The software's uninteroperated.
Yeah, right.
Um.
Yeah, anyway, just about.
Thank you. Um, I've apparently missed Councillor Dow, uh, then I'll go with Francine and, and Jack after that, but.
Thank you, Chair Tru. Just for the record, uh, since, uh, Manager McCall came in and started changing all these descriptions and do different job and and kinda like, uh, tried to accuse the councillors going in the town, uh, offices and asked too many questions and bothered the employee, uh, I think they, they know at that time it is a big problem and they try to hide it, it's too sad. Uh, nobody, uh, uh, tell the, the councillors what's going on in their office and the money was missing. And it, it's funny, like, they come and go, it's no, nobody in, uh, responsible for those money. Uh, people live in this town, they pay the tax, they, they, they want to stock, uh, lost their money, uh, and those people come, they get paid to do their job, they just left uh, laughing at us and talk behind us and, uh, making excuses, the town council is the problem all the time, because when we go in the offices and we try to, uh, question or, or knowing what's going on, they make a big deal and they're trying to see, to make it seem uh, to keep us out of the office, to can hide their money, they're wrong, what they did, they're given money for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dow. Um, Ms. Farland?
So a couple things, um, to Mr. Shenier's point. The other problem that the employees have a problem with is the Npower, our investment in our retirement. That is voluntarily, I sat down with the guy and my file was wrong on the employee side. His, he set it up, I had a new employee, my coworker, who was never set up in HR to have it taken out of repaid to set aside for retirement. The guy from Npower set everything up correctly and he said to me, it seemed like when it, when retirement was, when this was in payroll, treasurer's office, it was seamless. He says, now it's like it's not communicating. This was before we had the turnover in HR. So that's my first thing. Second thing is when a person leaves or is hired, um, my manager that was hired was given one sheet of paper, not enough information. There were other employees that are full-time that don't have access to computers or printers. So HR should be saying, okay, this is your first day, do you have access to a printer? If not, I will have a packet ready for you when you're, your first day or a week before or whatever, okay? I was also manager at a hotel. We had exit, enter and exit checklist when they were fired. Some were walked out, so that was walked out being a legal issue. This was if you gave your notice and you went to another job. You did not get your last paycheck, direct deposit or no, it was held until this, 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 and this, and this was done. And the checkmark is not sufficient, it has to be a date. The date that the keys were turned in, the date that the password was given, the date that your phone voicemail was cleared out and changed, or the date that your, it was communicated to IT that you were no longer a town employee. Case in point, GDS was charging us for fifteen people that was still on the list. that was still on the listing as employees. I had Jasmine tried to get on the system to work at home because we had COVID. We had too many licenses open. She we could not do anything until those employees were released. Will Canoia was one of them. And he had retired a year before, or you know, six months before. So I'm just saying, you know, the communication internally, when somebody leaves, there has to be a checklist and it has to be dated when each step was done. So if somebody is doing it, there has to be a date on the checklist, not just a check mark and initial, no, a date. Because if we go back to a vendor and say, we notified you on such and such a date, send me the email, now they pro-rate the the chart. So we're not paying a year and a half for an employee that hasn't been here. We have proof that we sent you an email.
Okay.
And then that IT person, which is Victor, should be on that email chain, school department included, to remember so that he's aware they are no longer employees of the town.
Right, so better communication.
You know, because the school department has access to software, to the website, you know?
Yeah.
Not just just because they're, whatever you call them, taken over by the state to these.
No, understood. Thank you for your, thank you for your information. I did, uh, Mr. Jovan, did you have something to add first?
Yeah, well, yeah, just through you, I just want to make sure that we, because we have public that are listening to this and I did have a conversation with Mr. Blanch about this earlier, just the numbers.
Yeah.
And no lost money is good money and I totally agree with that, but I want to make sure for the public that we have accurate numbers because to throw out two hundred thousand, if it wasn't two hundred thousand, and we also have recovered money.
Right.
Okay, so let's just make sure for the record, how much money was expended? In in total?
In total, we have a hundred and sixty nine thousand, two hundred and fifty five dollars and fifty cents expended.
And we've recovered how much?
Seventy eight thousand, three dollars, fifty three cents.
So we have outstanding.
A net loss of ninety one thousand, two hundred and fifty one dollars and ninety seven cents. And these are as of dollars that I've had. Um, a team member of mine reconciled this today.
Okay, so.
Ninety one thousand.
Losing ninety one thousand is a little money.
Of course.
And I think we have to continue to work on that, but why is it that we can't recover more funds from?
We can only go back sixty days with our health insurance company for recruitment of funds.
So they just pocket the money?
We can only go back sixty days.
Because they didn't provide any benefits, correct?
Correct.
So they just pocket it. Is that why you can call it a trap?
I would have to get that.
We'll have to take a look at that, but.
Um, there there were a couple of employees, um, there were a couple of employees who we did recover three hundred and thirty days, which is well over the sixty days. Um, we had two employees that we were able to recover eighty two days. There was two employees that we recovered fifty five days and we had an employee that we recovered four weeks. So we had one, two, three, five employees that we recovered over the sixty days.
Were those all town employees?
One, two town employees recovered at eighty two days. Um, I don't know the, I don't know this employee's name, I'm not familiar. Um, we recovered three hundred and thirty days for her, so I believe that was an extending circumstance. But they we recovered three hundred and thirty days from her. And then I believe these other two employees were school employees who recovered fifty five days.
Okay. Um, Counselor Shania?
Two questions. Is that the dollar figure that you gave, is that just twenty three or is that twenty two and twenty three together?
Those are combined twenty two and twenty three.
Okay. My concern is with the insurance and that kind of money, so it's not the big numbers that were originally floating out there when we were when we voted on this in council here a couple of weeks ago in late June, it was a hundred nineteen thousand. So it's 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 still a a chunk of money that shouldn't shouldn't have happened.
It's thousand ninety one, right.
And what I'm hoping here that you just heard something else now with the accountant on retirement funds, that they were paying for some funds for employees that weren't employees that, is this the beginning of a iceberg melting?
It's not retirement funds.
No.
What was that?
Npower's retirement funds, but there was no funds, there's no funds for Npower taken from the town or the tax dollar base. It's our employee contribution on our own.
Right.
But as employees, you're frustrated that you sign up for something and it isn't done for all of us.
More problems.
But it's something handled, the town's handling that's not being handled properly.
Correct.
Correct.
That's my point being, it may not be money, but it's employee fund.
Correct.
It's not being handled properly. So are we are we seeing the beginning of the iceberg to melt? I'm hoping not. You know, but how do we fix this? How how do we fix it when council's not even made aware of the problem?
Well, I'm sure that after being made aware tonight that we're all on board that this is going to get fixed and I I would like to hope that it's not going to continue. So that's the good part. Um.
But I wanted to look, you know, just to further on that, I want not just, not just the insurance to be, let's look at the whole the whole picture.
No, I think that's that's pretty clear.
And I don't know if that's an audit, I don't know. Is it a forensic audit? I don't know. But I know when you got a bill, and if I may continue, when I have a bill, for me, I get a bill from an electric company, the electric company invoices you and it says all the time is, you paid a bill, and it doesn't seem like we look at those, they just paid the bill. But again, you you guys know where I'm coming from.
Yes, thank you.
Where we're going to have to do more analysis into it to learn more, like Jack said, um, but the accountant wants to add something. I don't I I think we could just really beat this as long as we want, but the the point is is that we're all aware that there's a lot of issues now. Communication has been an issue in years past and I think we're all getting on the same page tonight, which is good. Maybe in a in a little while after Jack starts, we get to learn more. But, um, the accountant, please.
Just, um, through you, I do want to clarify that one of the credits is July that we received through the health insurance company, so that actually by the time it hits us, it hits us in fiscal twenty four. So that hundred nineteen thousand dollars that we had to, um, allocate from free cash to fix the deficit was just in regards to fiscal twenty three and where fiscal twenty three was standing. Um, I do just want to clarify because we were able to deep dive into the numbers. I had, um, Abby, who's our upper administrator, she had a little bit of free time today, so I utilized her to do a full-on analysis. Um, fiscal twenty two, as far as what was overpaid, was only eight hundred and seven dollars and five cents. So the remaining overage was all for fiscal twenty three, so I just do want to make that clarification.
Good.
Um, but also, um, with the information that more Nora had provided, she had provided the adjustments based on the bills as the credit stood for the bills. Um, those were also inclusive of employees coming on and charges being added also to the credits. So she had provided our May, June and, um, July adjustments, the May adjustment of fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty three ninety three. When we did an analysis of that bill to just look at, um, employees that were termed that we've got credits for, termed employees only was a credit of fifteen thousand, eight hundred and forty seven ninety nine cents. So the difference is employees that were also coming on, being onboarded, taking insurance plan, that would add to the that adjustment number.
I understand.
June's adjustment was actually instead of seventeen thirty eight ninety four, the June credit for termed employees was four thousand, seventy dollars and ninety nine cents. Um, June's termed employees, as far as June charges versus termed employees, was actually a wash for the month of June for those employees because they were removed, those employees credited on that bill were termed and moved in the bill on time. So there's no issues with the June credits. Um, the July, um, bill adjustment of fifty seven, two eighty five forty two. Um, there was a member on that bill who was actually deceased, so there was a credit for that employee. Um, and there was also plan changes in there as well. So that actual credit for termed employees is fifty eight thousand, seventy six dollars and fifty five cents. So the credit is actually higher for the termed employees versus what the actual bill because Nora gave Nora provided the actual numbers of the credits. I did, I had, um, Abby on my team deep diving into the numbers for specifically the term employees only for the adjusted credits. So that would give give us a truer number.
So the majority of this problem, though, you said, is in fiscal year twenty three?
That is correct.
Okay, that's.
And those are all resolved on a May bill adjustment and the July bill adjustment. I did confirm with Nora that all the corrections needed have taken place, so there shouldn't be any issues going forward. And there is an audit plan in place to have the bill audited on a quarterly basis to catch anything that may slip through the cracks.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have anything else to add? Because I think, um, we should probably wrap this up and make it come back in the future. Uh, Ms. Clemens?
Yeah, I just want to say, what was just explained and how things were just explained is how you're going to fix this problem. Good department head people. You can say that council can oversight and and ask questions, yes, and say, well, why do we have a deficit? Yes, because you have to vote on the money. That's how you know. You don't know the day to day and the people that we hire, some good, some bad. Obviously, we have issues, but you find stuff out, you ask questions, you find stuff out and you, you know, you grunt a little and and you make yourself, yeah, we're the council, but the reality is the day-to-day operations and the expertise in these items in this field, whether it's the treasurer, whether it is a new HR, whatever, it has to lie within their scope because they deal with these types of things. It's good to question and make sure people are in a row and your new TM, old TM, new TM, you know, has to have a handle on it. Sometimes you have a bad run of people of 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 administration and that's what it sounds like, what what what's happened here. And I'm just saying, it's not really, it's not the council to fix it, it's up to council to oversight it and ask questions about it. Hopefully, it's never going to happen again, but nobody can guarantee any of that. What you need is department people, Francine, to go over all and. Francine, again.
Christine, sorry, my brain. You need good people to be managing what's going on with this community.
Because we're not, not me, actually, Mr. Dow, who's very got great businesses, none of us are, this is not our forte. Unfortunately, it happens in business all the time. You have to make, you have to do what you're doing.
You need to leave the the office door open too.
Right, you have to, right, right. But but the manager, that's why we hire a manager, is supposed to manage his department heads and ask these questions for council and bring answers.
Correct, thank you.
So hopefully, we get back into that a little bit more in this community too.
Absolutely.
Just saying. But thank you, thank you for your your diligence and all that you've done, Christine. Just, I'm just saying, you know, it sounds like you about you got the problems and you addressed it and that's what needs to be done, you know?
Counselor McKinnon?
So my only question is, what action are we taking? Are we taking any action here or are we just going to continue to watch it?
Just custom, bring it back.
Um, I I mean, I I would, I personally, you know, want to hold people accountable for the misuse of tax dollars, but, um, Counselor Adams?
My recommendation here is obviously, I think you should bring it back up in general government at a later date.
Right.
And there's going to be a process put in place. And we can catch it all we want or miss it all we want. If there's no process in place, it's never going to get fixed. So be it that, you could you could add it to goals and objectives of the town manager down the road, you could do all that stuff, not add more to people's plate, but it is a process that's not there, it's not existent or it's broken. So it needs to be evaluated and it's not just this process, it's all the processes within the town and how things work and run. So that I would obviously not let it go, but maybe bring it up in a in a month or so again.
Yeah, and that's pretty much where I'm at.
Especially the goals and objectives are are asked for.
You can, Counselor McKinnon, and Counselor Adams, you also.
Thank you, Chair Tru. Uh, just to respond to Ms. Clemens, I think we're back on the track now. Uh, like you say, June, uh, twenty.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, uh, start a stink, I want to call it like this. Uh, I think we're back on the track. I think, uh, people quit, not because the counselors, because they're getting cut. Time time to run, uh, before, uh, the discipline comes, so just to make sure. I think we're on the right track. I think we're going to fix all this problem, hopefully with the new TM coming in and we will talk about the second agenda coming in for the audit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, I think we should put this to bed for now and move forward, um, in a month or so, a couple of months when we can get more information, better process going forward. All right. Um, we're going to go to agenda number eight, review and discuss the lease agreement with the registered motor vehicles and entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval.
Couple.
Okay, um, the town manager sent over the information today. Um, it's basically where the first lease was a two percent increase and then no increase for two, the following two years. He would like a two-year extension for three percent each year. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Christine, but I it's it seems pretty cut and dry. He said he spoke with the chairman about it. They asked for it to be on here. Uh, the, I think it's great that the RMV wants to continue for a couple of month, a couple more years. I know they want to expand and and get something even bigger in the future, but the fact that they want to entertain this agreement sounds good to me. Um, anybody have anything to add to this? Uh.
Well, yeah, the friend.
Dow?
Thank you.
Counselor Dow?
Yeah, I mean.
No, I listened to your question first.
Thank, thank you, Chair Tru. Uh, we spent a lot of money on that building to, uh, fix it, to keep the RMV in, the motor vehicle, whatever it is. Now they want only two years and it's like a threaten to us. Uh, we only need three years and if you don't find a bigger space, we're going to move out. Uh, either if we find a bigger place, we still have to follow the rule, the regulation with the AC, with the airflow. Are we making money? We 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 serve our our citizen and other people. It's a good sign. But right now, I think we have a train coming in. Uh, if they don't want to do five here plus five, I wouldn't give them that contract. I will I will rent it to restaurants for uh, different businesses, I think would be a better view for the town because it seems like they they cut us dry by only two years. So we spent, what, eighty, ninety thousand dollars to put that building back on it to to be able to comply and to be able to, they use it and now they only want another two year and they're leaving anyway. If 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 we give them two years, they're leaving anyway, or we have to find a bigger building and we're going to do it up to code for them, spend them more money, so I'm not sure, is a is a, I wouldn't support that. I would support five year plus, two years, I wouldn't support that. Thank you.
Um, to answer one of your questions, currently annually, uh, we make twenty seven thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars, seventy five cents. Um, the the following year would be twenty seven thousand, nine twenty eight nineteen cents and then twenty eight thousand, seven sixty six oh four. Um, so it comes out to like fifty six thousand over the two years.
Yeah, you break even what you spent for the AC. So you're not, you know?
Uh, the only thing I will remind you is that people who come here to the RMV will bring foot traffic to South Bridge.
They're leaving anyway, not not to argue back and forth, Chair, but they're leaving anyway. They're giving you train. In two years, we're going to leave anyway if you find me, if you don't find me a bigger place. They're going to stay in town, they're going to just see private, uh, building and they're not going nowhere, that's what they're saying on the contract. So if you give them two years or or you don't, they're they're still going to look for a private, uh, place because I don't think the town, uh, you should give them a bigger place and spend another half a million dollars to make it, uh, compliant for another, what, two, three years? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll go with Ms. Clemens first and then down to Counselor Adams.
So it's very interesting. I hadn't followed the fact of how much you guys had invested into that building recently. I knew there had been some money put out because they wanted more, but I didn't realize how much and it just, it makes me, uh, right at this moment, I'd like to, yeah, there are things I'd like to say. Uh, but I won't because we're on camera. Um, I'm not surprised because of what they did in the past to Big Bunny Market. If we all remember how we, well, I I clearly remember because it was a lot of months in your my life. Um, you know, at least we got it back, we said, and we gave them the sweetheart deal when they came here. Uh, they made Big Bunnies put out three to four hundred thousand dollars to fix their building. And then when Big Bunnies wanted to raise the rent a little bit, they said you have to drop it fifty percent or whatever it was, something like that, it was crazy. And Bunny said they couldn't and they gave them a thirty day quit, done, out the door they were. And that's when they went to Sturbridge and then we worked our tails off and caused a lot of trouble for Devell Patrick and they came back to this building. So now, flash forward fifteen years or whatever it's been, it's a shame what should have been done maybe on this because they come back with, oh, two years and we're out of your building after however much money you've spent. You really should have just up their rent because what are they going to do in the meantime, in, you know, in the next few days? What would they do? They, you should have at least argued the point that the rent then needs to be the going rate that's out there for square footage and all of this type of of property and not necessarily what this monthly rate is. Um, that might have been something to say, we've invested in you and now you're going to drop us, so for the next two years, we'd like to recoup a little bit. We still can't get it all, but maybe we could have raised this rent to a little bit more than they're paying. Um, that might have been my my suggestion before this came out like this, um, before the deal was sort of made. Uh, three percent, that's like a joke, um, really, with what you invested in there and now, like you said. I read that, I was glad to hear they want to stay in town. Obviously, they know that the sixty to seventy different communities that come and use this RMV where they told us fifteen years ago that everybody go online and they didn't need a brick and mortar building were wrong because they kept it even through COVID. Um, so it's, it, this is just so disappointing and I I just, yeah, really. So this is just so disappointing and I just, yeah, really, really, really disappointed. To, because I have been thinking about after reading this, where does the town have? I don't even think we have anything for them anyway and I literally, as the last few days going through town, looking at what. I don't even know where they would go at this point locally, so that's a real shame. Chances are then they'll just try to pull out and do like they did before and just leave. I agree with you, Counselor Chairman, excuse me, it brings a lot of foot traffic. You know, it does bring a lot, it brings people buying gas, it brings people stopping at the grocery store, it brings people, but, but boy, slap in the face. The town should have gotten a little bit more out of that for the next two years if that's the case. I mean, they put in ready, that's the, we should have said, how about forty thousand a year or something, whatever, we should have come up with a better number.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you there.
I just don't know if they'll play with it or what they'll say.
I'm gonna go to Counselor Adams and Counselor Shenier.
I agree with what you had said earlier, Chair, and Ms. Clemens mentioned as well about the foot traffic and the much needed. The much needed fact, we need an RMV in this local area because next thing you know, you're going to Worcester and all these other places are shut down. If I'm not mistaken.
Worcester comes here.
Worcester's in the open?
No, I said Worcester comes here, people come here, people from Worcester come here, they don't like Worcester.
So the whole point though, also, I just want to point a clarification, I thought that it comes out of taxpayer money no matter where it comes from. But that HVAC system was through the pandemic funds, not the right local taxpayers, I believe. I can go back and do research on it, but I think that's how it got paid for, to bring it up to speed because of the air quality through the pandemic issue.
I actually recommended that, I believe, saying, can't we, if it's a COVID reason, can't you?
It's a COVID reason, I don't know if it was CARES Act money or something.
I don't know where it came from, I don't know.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Shenier.
I understand that the rents is not what it should be. When this whole registry debacle started and they were gonna leave, Big Bunnies, they gave the thirty day notice and they were leaving Southbridge altogether. And the push was the DMV to be here to service the people of this community in the area. That push was able to take the reality. And they opened up down there and there was to serve the people. The chance you take here is that if you don't renew. Can't come to terms in the numbers and money, that they'll pack up and leave, they can, they'll do it, gone. And then where we at, they may not come back to Southbridge, they may look for another facility, I have a feeling where they might be going or would like to go. But there's a chance that they close, they pulled out of Big Bunnies and left Big Bunnies with a big bill. That, and they were gone in thirty days, don't think that they can't be gone out of here in thirty days too if we don't. Is it something that we deal with for two years and let them go their own thing, I don't know. Can we try to get more money, maybe we do, but what kind should we, we could make them leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jovan?
Yeah, through you. I remember, we'll have to verify about the care zone here, because I remember the conversation about that, we just have to see if it was reversed or not. We should research that to make sure, but regardless, I think, and I agree with Counselor Dow, hey, you know, the rail trail's coming in here. But we do know the rail trail's gonna take a couple of years to develop and build. So I'd rather have somebody in that building and paying us rent, while it's not ideal, like everybody said, that they have a dollar amount, at least we have somebody there. We have foot traffic there. And then I think the town, we should come up with some kind of, look at what that reuse of that building's gonna be. Because it's gonna be a town-owned building on the rail trail and what we're gonna do to either market it for a restaurant. Or what has to go in there or what grant monies could be there, but it'll give us two years, at least with a tenant there, we're getting money. And develop a plan about, we know they're leaving, they're not gonna use that building, okay, that's fine. And I agree with Ms. Clemens, I've done the same thing, looking at. One, town Southbridge doesn't have a building that's gonna have a space requirement and Counselor Dow is correct. We're not gonna invest that kind of money, we have too many other projects to invest money in, to invest money into a town-owned building if we had it. To make it a common build for them. And like Counselor Shenier said, I think I have a sneaking suspicion where they're gonna go into an area where they already have some state departments in already. So that's probably where they're gonna go. So it's not the best, but at least we have people there, we'll have individuals coming to town and develop a plan of what we wanna go forward with that building.
Thank you, I tend to agree, Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you, I'm not against them staying here, but the reason why I say what I said, maybe we can get out of them another more years. I mean, why they have to put their rule on us, we can't negotiate, okay, you know, we. We're supposed to be when McCall here one year, or maybe we can get him after five and ten, and now they're coming back, we're only giving you two years, like. They put on their route, like why we cannot say five and negotiate another year or two out of the two, you know, like four year or more years, that's what I. That's the whole idea, I don't want them to leave either, but as a businessman, if somebody come to me, I'm gonna give you two, no, I want five. Meet me halfway, meet me somewhere, you don't, you don't just give them what they want, you know, like, we're not desperate, I don't think the town desperate. To lose money, who does the money, I mean, we plowed the parking lot, we have the DPW cleaner up, sold. We maintain the building, I mean, what do they do, free rent pretty much, thank you.
Yeah, the problem I'm seeing is like a lot of things, the whole barn's on fire talk, this says September fourteenth. Makes me think in my head, just off top of my head, August fourteenth is probably the drop dead date to renegotiate thirty days before and we only have one council meeting between now and then. And we're back into a corner with that again, that's just the way I see it off top of my head, Counselor Adams?
It's not a wrong to think in that way, but the thing is, a lot of things can happen in two years. And maybe in the process, as soon as you get the town manager in here, that discussion could already start taking place with some of the assets that we have in town. I mean, absolutely, I mean, two years is two years, but what are we gonna do with it in the meantime? I mean, just take the, take the, it's a good asset what we have in the town. But maybe that process should start working as soon as possible, as soon as the contract is signed. Keep working on it. If they gotta go, they gotta go then, that's the way it goes.
Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you, I wouldn't say what is gonna go there, this is, it's amazing location, like. Investor is gonna go crazy on it, you can put it on a bid, like an auction with rental, like auction with, people will go crazy on that location. I mean, especially Center for now, the ice cream down there, they know the trailer's coming, it's gonna be all new stuff, I mean, you wanna build a town? Don't be weak, be strong, make a tough decision, thank you.
Yeah, and the next door neighbors did just redo that terrible parking lot. The problem is, I personally think that we should be supporting them being here. It also is a service that is offered to this community and there's a lot of people in this community that can benefit from the RMV. There's a lot of people that still don't have vehicles and are going back and forth to a centralized location. And again, they're gonna have to go a long way and out of all the things that the citizens I hear complain about. The RMV being here isn't one of their complaints, I'm sure they appreciate it. So, Ms. Farland?
I beg to differ, because I'm in the office that they talk about the RMV. So the first thing is, I used to ride the bus because I couldn't drive because of icing. So I'd drive, there'd be a stop right there, people from the RMV would get on. And they'd be complaining about the RMV on the bus, that the RMV wanted them to go on the computer. And guy says, if I had a computer at home, maybe I'd have a job, maybe I'd have my license. I don't have a computer, I don't have a printer, all I have is my phone and I, you know, to receive stuff on a phone. I didn't, I didn't say who I was or where I worked and what he had to do, I just, you know, but there were eight people on that ride. Complaining about the RMV, they couldn't renew their license, mind you, they must have had five or ten bills of vehicles. That were unlicensed, unregistered, uninsured, they had parking tickets, you know, there's violations probably as long as they're armed, some of them. Because six days later, they came into the office and then went, you were on the bus. So, you know, you can't get away from it and I said, well, you can't because of vision, you know, but anyway. So that's my first thing with the RMV. The second thing is their online site, they say you can do this, that and the other thing online, you can't. It does not, just like MUNIS, it's not seamless, it does not. They don't, the people, it's not big enough for them to say, to print, you must keep this record permanently in your records. They don't, they don't print it, they just keep it in their phone, so they don't read it, number one. Number two, the plate cancellation receipt used to be blank in the bottom. I wrote to the state and said, you need to put verbiage in here telling people what to do, it is your state law. Then you need to tell them you need this, this and this, now there's verbiage. So now they come in, I don't, you know, why do I have to prove I don't own the vehicle, it says it right here. Oh, then they stop, they go from ten down to zero, because they're upset and they come right back down to zero, I don't have the bill to sell, how do I get it? Go to the guy you sold it to and get it.
Okay, well, thank you for your concern, but I'm really here to, you know, discuss the inner workings of the RMV and there's, you know, the. How it works online versus in person, the fact that you do need to go there sometimes and there's a location in Southbridge really is it. I, everybody has difficult times with the RMV, but that really, you know, we need to get back to signing this lease agreement. And whether or not we're gonna recommend to council that we do it. So does anyone else have anything left to that, Mr. Jovan?
Yeah, just through you real quick, so I'm looking through, I used to have a ticker when I was the council chair and stuff and things that go on. And this was actually on my list and we completed the RMV lease in June of twenty twenty one, because it had been expired, so. Just to comment that the barn's on fire, like rushing it, actually, I commend that Charlie actually worked on this. Make sure that we didn't get it expired with the change of, you know, new town manager coming in, so I think he negotiated the best agreement that he could. And make sure that it doesn't last and all that, so, you know, I think some of us that are around remember that. Hey, that was a three-year lease because it went back, because that was a, we negotiated, McCall negotiated a three-year lease, but it had to go back time. Because they were actually there and we actually got money, so it's not ideal, but.
So you're saying there's time to renegotiate this whole thing? Well, that's where I.
But I'm just saying the fact that we have an interim town manager with all the other issues that go on, the fact that he was able to get that accomplished, it's, I. Barn on fire, rushing it, but at least we got it in the queue and we're gonna have it negotiated before we.
Thank you, yeah, not a dig on Charlie, but I appreciate it, Counselor McKenney?
Thank you, through you, I would have to agree with Counselor Dow on this one and if you read the services that we're providing. We are providing a lot of services to that building, we're collecting some rent from them, but we do have to provide janitorial services, security service. Maintenance of premises, all kinds of services, so I'm gonna have to agree with Counselor Dow on this one, thank you.
Ms. Clemens?
Thanks. Everyone is important, you got great input, the problem is, it's not enough money. So, they wanna stay for two more years, I suggest it's a real negotiation where Mr. Glancher makes another phone call. And says, hey, look, our people are a little bit concerned and that it'd work much better with a bigger number. Five percent, seven percent, all the costs that you just described have gone up. And you're not guaranteeing us any more time to recoup all the money we've invested. So we ask you to, here's the new number, here's what we think, I can make it fly with council, let it be a real negotiation. It doesn't take much to make a phone call, I can tell you that when we negotiated with the state originally. And they came in and said, you've gotta spend fifty thousand dollars to renovate that building. And we sat in that meeting and they said, oh, there's two choices, we can pay this money or we don't, or they're not gonna be here, whatever. And I said, no, there's a third choice and the third choice is, we'll let them rent, we'll give them a good deal on the rent, we are not renovating. They just screwed Big Bunnies, we're not paying for them to renovate this building and do what they ask, let them do it. Oh, everybody shook in their boots and said, well, wait a minute, I said, it's an option here, they don't wanna, they don't wanna have a problem. Lo and behold, phone call later, Chris Clardy came back in and said, yep, yep, we're good, it's all set, we're, they're gonna take the, they're gonna take the deal. So who knows, wise man said, if you don't ask, you won't receive, if you do ask, you might receive. So I would suggest at least an attempt at increasing the amount of money they're paying us in light of the fact that they wrote in a letter. That they're leaving us in two years, they admitted they're leaving us in two years. So at least ask them for some more money if we're gonna keep them, that's all, little more.
Can I make a motion to postpone it to the town manager or renegotiate the rent or extra a few years? And then bring it back to Torga?
Would it be postponed or would it be a recommendation that the town manager?
And then he brings it to the council, because I don't think postponing it back to us makes a difference, it really needs to be a council decision.
Motion to recommend that the town manager try to renegotiate for a higher price.
Either rent or years.
Rent or years or something.
And if he doesn't renegotiate?
Then let the council.
Let the council make a decision up there, that's what it's supposed to be.
So you wanna make that motion?
Three councils can't decide for none, so.
Counselor Dow made a motion?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to recommend the town manager renegotiate for a higher price. Or longer years, or renegotiate for a better deal.
So I, just to stop quick, typically, the subcommittee says yay or nay, right? So are you saying we recommended a negative?
True.
No, no, what I'm just saying is.
Subcommittee can have all kinds, we can ask a department head some more questions before they send it to council. So what we're saying is, how about the manager do a little bit more and then send it to council either as it is here. Or better, we're asking the man, he doesn't have to, I guess he doesn't have to.
We're not denying it, we're not saying no, we don't want it, we're not, we're not killing it here, we just.
And we don't kill it, subcommittee should never kill anything, three councils don't decide for nine, they were, nine were elected.
You have until nine fourteens.
I'm just, we're just asking the town manager for a little more due diligence before he sends it up to council.
But the rest of the council doesn't have an opportunity to.
They do, that's why we send it after.
They still will, they could say, we don't need more rent.
Yeah, well, that's, but how do you get it up to the council to have that conversation?
After this, it's going to council.
No, you're saying, you're just saying it's going back to this. So you recommend a negative recommendation, but it's gonna go to the full council on the agenda or not?
No, we're gonna vote on it to be more discussed and go straight to the town council.
Let the manager try to renegotiate and send up either this or whatever else he's negotiating.
But what if six other councils say, no, we're happy with the three percent?
They can do it up there.
How, because they're not allowing it to come out of this subcommittee?
Of course we are.
So, so you're saying to kill it?
Where you think it stays.
So you're saying to kill it right now?
Alright, guys, we have a, Mr. Jovan technically has the floor, let's wrap your comment and move on.
Understand what your motion is, your motion is to just kick it back to the town manager.
Okay.
So, so there's a few different ways, there's a few different ways to do it, right, you wanna postpone, you wanna refer, you wanna recommend. This, the flavor of this subcommittee seems to be that they want to recommend to full council that the town manager goes back. So what you're suggesting is that we put agenda item on the seventh that says, vote to. Direct the town manager to renegotiate these council, so then what is it that?
Town manager is gonna then talk to the chair.
Let's, 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 let me finish this conversation with Mr. Jovan and then I can, I'll recognize you. What is it that you wish that, you understand our flavor, what are you looking for from us then, in your opinion?
I know, I understand, your recommendation is that you believe that it should be renegotiated by the town manager.
Right.
But is the full council gonna have that opportunity to have that conversation to say, yes, we agree?
Right now, they're not.
We're not, hold on, listen, hold on, we're not.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
If you want, if you want, hold on people, if you wanted us to not, if you wanted to hear this, it sounds like it's gonna get voted no. And then you could do whatever you want with it, but it's, we're trying to recommend from subcommittee that we wish that the town manager, so we can just vote it no. And then you could do whatever, do whatever you want with it, it won't go up, it won't go up at all.
No, I'm not arguing with it, I'm just, I'm just wanna understand.
And I wanna understand what you wish, I wanna understand what you wish this said.
Is it still going to be on the agenda for the full council to discuss on Monday night, that's what I'm asking.
No, not if we recommend to the town manager unless.
He can call it in tomorrow.
Okay, I just.
Okay, Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you, to Mr. Jovan, if we vote no, the council, they're not gonna see it.
That's not true.
Yes, it is.
That is not true.
Hold on, listen, according to, excuse me, according to what the chairman has said in the past.
It's not up to the chairman, it's up to legal.
Said that it's not going up if it was not recommended and I'm just quoting what they said and that's, and that's.
I will, I will go to state on that one, because a subcommittee of three elected people. Do not speak for nine elected councilors, this subcommittee, any subcommittee, anything.
What's the point of that subcommittee?
To do exactly what we're doing, when a department head brings something in, by the way, they used to bring it in a month ahead or two weeks or three weeks ahead. And say, geez, we're doing this and a group of peers, a group of committee, a group of councilors and a group of citizens. And it's a chance to let the public come in and have a lot of interpretation of what's going on and ask questions. And then you might say, geez, you know. And then you might say, geez, you know, there's a lot of problem here, maybe people have concerns, could you clarify this? Yes, let me get that, and council's gonna have this question, so can you clarify before council? And that gives everybody a chance to be very transparent with the community. To kill something, quote, to try, to try, cause it will not fly. To kill something in subcommittee is illegal. The people elected nine counselors to make the decision by majority, or in two thirds, depending on what the vote is. And for, for you to think that three people, not the citizens members, but three counselors. Can speak for nine is absolutely illegal, illegal.
Can you mind education, send me that where the charter, the charter say that, my love? Send it to me.
I'll go to the state. It's not, it's why in the charter, it's hard, it's because we can have subcommittee.
Send me that email where the town by law say, uh, uh, have to go up there.
Where does the charter say that three people can make a decision for nine?
We're not making this, that's why we're discussing it.
You would kill us, that means you're saying you're gonna kill anything that you don't like, that's wrong. You can't fill a, a, a subcommittee with members that think like you and then expect, and then cancel stuff upstairs.
Alright, hold on, hold on, hold on, listen, wait. We are just going to.
And I think we're gonna have a lot of backing at a meeting like that.
I, all I did was tell you what the chairman said, I didn't say what was gonna happen, so here's what we're gonna do, real quick. We're gonna have a recess, thank you. And it is seven forty nine, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We are on agenda item number eight, which there is a motion at the moment. And the second to recommend that the town manager renegotiate this deal for a better deal. But I'd like to recognize Mister Jovan first, before I say what I think we should do. Mister Jovan?
So this agenda item says, review, discuss the lease agreement with registered motor vehicles, entertain motion to recommend to the town council for approval. Alright, so your conversation right now is like, hey, we're not recommending approval right now, we'd like it to go up to the town manager. Back to the town manager to see if he can renegotiate a better deal, is that correct?
That seems to be the flavor.
That's your recommendation?
Yes.
Right?
Right.
So my question was, and you're saying, hey, the whole council. So my question is, it's never gonna get to the whole council to be reviewed and discussed to say, yes, we agree with the subcommittee's recommendation. That it should go back. So that's what I'm trying to understand, is it gonna go on the agenda? You can, don't have to vote yes or no, but you can simply say, hey, we reviewed, we discussed this lease agreement. Right? We do not believe it's in the best interest of Southridge to go up, and our recommendation out of subcommittee is that it goes back to the town manager to further renegotiate. And then the council can debate, a full council can debate, yes, we agree with the subcommittee, no, we don't agree with the subcommittee.
Okay, so.
I mean, I, I, I just, otherwise, to the, it's council.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to, right, but I'll, I'll make a motion to amend that motion.
Okay, what?
So that's my only question, and I, you know, I would like to see, stuff should be able to get up there, so you have a full council to debate it. To say, yeah, you know what, the subcommittee is correct, we should negotiate a better deal.
We were about to make a positive recommendation to renegotiate the deal, so we weren't trying to kill anything. Let's move to Ms. Clemens's motion to amend.
We'll make a motion that we send this up to council to review with, with the suggestion that they ask the town manager to renegotiate.
You second that amendment?
What is it?
Should send it up to, to council.
What's that, what's that, again, please, can you repeat?
I'll make, uh, make a motion to recommend that we send it up to council to review it as a whole and, and that our recommended. That our recommendation strongly encourages the town manager to renegotiate.
That's not an amendment that's changing his motion.
Well, it says we're sending it up to, we're recommend, we're not recommending it to council.
His motion was.
The problem that I don't have, the problem I have with that is it says, review and discuss this lease agreement. And, and at face value, what we're really all saying is that we don't like this lease agreement, we want a better one. So, in my opinion, the, all the amendments should be withdrawn, and we should vote, if that's really what you want. We don't want this lease agreement, then we should vote no on it with the recommendation out of subcommittee, like in the minutes or just. The recommendation of subcommittee was to do something different, get something else. If you don't like this lease agreement.
I do agree with, with Mister Jovan that full council should, um, have the right to look at this lease agreement.
And that will be up to the person who creates the agenda, I'm not defending or saying anything, I'm just saying, what are we gonna do here as the subcommittee? Are we going to vote yes or no on this item? So if it were me.
I make a motion to withdraw your, withdraw my motion.
Withdraw yours, yours had no second, the main motion is on the table, yes or no? To review and discuss the lease agreement, registered motor vehicles, entertain a motion, recommend to council for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present, no. Thank you. I'd like to enter, if someone could make a motion to move agenda item number nine up. Uh, because I believe that would be the last item that the town accountant might have anything to speak to, I wanna keep her here, so. Thank you, all those in favor of moving agenda item number nine? Opposed, unanimous of all present, okay, agenda number nine is discussion of town audit. Um, I was hoping that the chairman of council was here, there is an audit that's done every year. I have been told that there are looks into a bigger audit or a different type of audit. I do not have much more information than that, um, and I was hoping maybe you did, of the, Mr. Russell or Mister Jovan. Um, and if there's, if there's really no information, this, this item will just end up going away.
Oh, I'd like to know, is there an audit?
There's always an audit every year.
You should get a copy.
But there's talks of a different audit, does anybody have any information about this, cause it was the chairman and Mister Blanchard.
So.
Mister Jovan, you have information?
So, uh, this is a financial management review. That is, uh, through the Department of, uh, Local Services. It's a, it's a comprehensive operation with you, local accounting, treasury collection, assessing and overall administrative functions. Designed to improve day-to-day management practices and procedures through specific hands-on tools, guidance, strategies for improving the local government. And, uh, that, it takes a email from, uh, the chair of the council. To them, it's a free management review, then they'll, uh, they'll develop a, a review of all our accounting, financial systems and all that. Make recommendations as to, uh, improve, so it could pick up on the insurance and say, hey, the way you do your insurance. Uh, is, is not probably the best practice, and we recommend implementing this or, uh.
So this is more of an audit of the flow of day-to-day operations?
A management, a financial.
Yeah, of a financial day-to-day management operations, got you. Alright, uh, Councilor McKenna?
But my question is, after Ms. Harney's left. There was a question about where some of the funds were, and they couldn't find the money that. She had given us a list of all the money that we have, such as, um, stabilization, free cash. Um, different accounts, our capital budget, and there was a question about where are all these funds, they couldn't find them. So that's when we started talking about, they should have done an audit as soon as she left, so we know where all the money is now. I'm not saying it's, I'm not saying anything going on there, I'm just saying, we were questioning, the town manager said he did not know where all the funds were. That's why we wanted an audit, so that's my question, are we doing an audit to find all these missing funds? Or are they not missing?
Okay, so if I may speak to that, so every, at the end of every fiscal year, there is an audit that occurs, we have Rosalian Clark, their audit. So prior to, um, Karen leaving, our, our fiscal year twenty-two audit was closed and final. So the fiscal audit of twenty-three will occur between January and February, depending on the auditor schedule. So that's when twenty, that's when fiscal twenty-three will get audited. Um, as far as the funds you're speaking to, um, Karen did track a lot of that outside of Munus. She knew all of the account numbers off the top of her head. And where she tracked a lot of things externally in spreadsheets, it's about me being able to know where they're saved on our network, so I can put my hands on these spreadsheets and where she saved them. I honestly haven't had a chance to go deep diving into the files to find all of them. And I don't know all of the account numbers off the top of my head like she did. Unfortunately, so I'm, I'm still in the learning curve to learn and find where all the data is.
So I'm not playing.
So that the funds are there, it's just a matter of me finding them and putting my hands on where all the information is in this.
So, but this is why we wanted an audit now and not wait till January and February.
Understood.
We wanted it done immediately.
Nope, that's understood.
Okay, good, thank you, Councilor McKenna, Councilor Shannon?
This question, I don't know if the Jack, uh, for you, but. You said it was just a, 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 a call to that particular department?
Yes.
By, with the chair?
The chair has to send an email requesting.
So, do we know if that's been done?
I, I, Charlie had said that he had knocked on the finance of from the chairman on that. I mean, I think it would be a, a good, in tandem with a regular audit, you know, like the regular financial audit, this. Maybe a good opportunity for the Division of Local Services to come in and look at our systems and give recommendations. Um, it's free service that they, they provide, um, so it, I, I, I think it would behoove us to at least.
If I may.
Do that, and, you know, it talks about, you know, one town procure new audited services and, uh, the assessment office. And since we have so many new people, no, no disrespect to them, but we have so many new people. They may come up with some recommendations for better systems and better practices for the town to, to use.
Absolutely, and before you continue, Mister Shannon, I just want, uh, Councilor Shannon, I wanna make it clear that we're not taking any action tonight, this doesn't require. Wait, I just, for the record, for the people here, that this doesn't require any action by us tonight, this is just a discussion. So we can say that we discussed it with transparency, it's either happening or it's not, like Mister Jovan said. So I just want everyone to know, we're not looking for any sort of motion, we're just gonna discuss this and move on with the agenda. But please continue, Mister Councilor.
There's only thing that, for me, is that I don't think it was fair for these employees to start on board here. The treasurer and the, the accountant without having a clean slate beforehand. And I, I think it's important, and maybe in your discussion with the chairman that. What we heard from Jack, that, to see if he's done that or plan on doing that.
I, I, I would imagine that most of us are in agreement with this thing, I just really wanted it to be here so that we could discuss it, understand what it is. And we can all be on the same page that it's, it's happening, most likely, the, the, finalizing their talks. But if anybody else has any questions while we're on the subject, um, I'd like to entertain them now. Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Chair, to you. So, when I asked for the audit, I asked for, in a general, because look to insurance issue. We, we, you know, you guys find out was a little late, some money we can't recover. I think it should be every department audit, every book. Uh, not only the treasures or certain, uh, department to start afresh, because it looks like a lot of, uh, a lot of mistake, nobody paid attention on. So I think it should be a request audit in every department, uh, not only one certain place, thank you.
Thank you, and we can certainly, um, reiterate that, and again, there, there's the audit that happens every year. This new audit that takes into day-to-day financial administrative practices, so. Um, hopefully, the two of them combined is what we're looking for, especially based on what you said there. Um, is there anybody else that would like to add, uh, Ms. Clemens?
Oh, I think that what, uh, Mister Jovan has found is very interesting, and, and why wouldn't, why couldn't we just, uh. Make a motion that council consider, um, you know, getting the email sent off and, and asking for this, for this, uh.
Yeah.
Process to get started. You can entertain motions on discussions that you've had, so I would make that motion.
I, yeah, and, okay, thank you for the motion and the second, I just don't think it's, it's needed, uh, because I don't think. It, the council is gonna end up voting on it, I think it's gonna either happen or it's not, but if you guys wanna put the recommendation through. I love subcommittee recommendations, so.
But he says you need an email of the council, so.
Chairman.
Chairman, I get it, so why can't the council, which gives directive to the chairman as well and makes suggestions, vote on something like this?
Cause there are, well, there are some things that the chairman can do, like establish and, and de-establish committees, right? For example, that, just to give you an example, that, that, that they have, they have authority to do certain things. So if you wanna give general government's blessing on this, I have no problem with that.
Right, but what happens is things that come out of general government, like you said, usually, they end up where they need to be, so.
I'm sure if.
Make a motion, you say our committee's asked for the council to, to, uh, talk about it and, and for the chair to decide if they're gonna sign this thing. Why wouldn't the chair, why wouldn't, why wouldn't you do that?
If the chair wants to put it on his agenda, sure, and I have no problem supporting the recommendation that. General government give this blessing, um, that's just my personal opinion, so is there any more discussion?
What do we vote on right now?
Is it, just a, a motion and a second, the recommend that council asks the chairman to do this audit.
The free audit.
The free one that does the, the day-to-day finance.
Well, that one just started.
The one that we're talking about, that today is the, is the one, the, the, the separate audit.
Could you just speak it up?
That does a financial management review.
Through the Division of Local Services.
So what is it called, it's the financial audit of the Division of?
Finan- financial management review.
Financial management review for the, by the Division.
The, um, Division of Local Services.
Division of Local Services, by the Department of Division of.
So the council is making a motion to recommend, this committee is making a motion to recommend that the council.
The council requests the chairman to sign documents to begin the process for the management review.
Yeah, financial management.
Financial management audit.
That is the motion on the floor.
Review, review.
Is there any other discussion?
So, uh, this, I'll just, so what they said, we examine documents included annual budgets, balance sheets, cash, cash reconciliation reports. Charter by laws, annual reports, P L S, independent audits, so that we do our independent audit. Uh, credit report and review in the, uh, financial management practices. The focus on the town's government structure in the context of the duties and responsibilities of financial offices. The budget and capital plan and processes, the degree of coordination and communication that exists between and among boards, officials and staff. Involved in the financial management function and the general efficiency of the financial operations. Measured by the town's success in maximizing resources and minimizing, oh, I'm shooting, minimizing cost, which we all want. And as always, our services are at low cost. So it sounds like a very valuable review.
Mister Jovan, does it happen to say in there how long this take?
Uh, it, it doesn't say, but I, I would suggest that we do it and then the chair and the, we can figure out timeline.
Understood.
Could you mention that documents with the agenda, like, you know, if it goes up or whatever?
I believe, uh, Chairman Lazlo has a copy of that.
Right, but I meant the counselors, so if they're, you know, something that they're gonna support or not.
Can I just ask first?
We'll direct Mister Blanchard for that, yeah.
I just want some clarity on this motion, because tomorrow morning, we're gonna be talking about the agenda, so I just want some clarity on this motion.
Oh, right, right, thank you.
Uh, I think it would be, uh.
Motion to recommend that the council chair request a town audit by.
The Division of Local Services, a financial management review.
It's a financial management review.
By the Division of Local Services.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I'd really like to vote on this, but Miss Farland, if you could accept something brief?
The last time they were in was wonderful for me. Uh, there were three changes in the assessor's office regarding record keeping, report, report generation, types, things like that. That we still use today, um, so I don't wanna get into the specifics, it's too long, but.
Beneficial, thank you.
Saying it was beneficial as an employee.
I'm glad to hear.
To have that reviewed.
Excellent.
How long ago was that?
Yeah, how long ago was that, Miss Farland, did you?
Two thou, wait.
Nineteen forty-two.
Two thousand thirteen or fourteen.
Thank you, so it's been a good ten years almost. Awesome, alright, so seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present, thank you, um, two items left here. Going back to agenda item number five, review and discuss the town council rules and regulations and entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval. Motion and a second? Um, the. The, there's only one thing that I have found in here, um, that has caused a problem this year. And it was the, the term dates, uh, for the subcommittee members seem to be a jumble this year. Um, so, I would entertain a motion to recommend to just simply. Change the date under rule four A. It says, subcommittee shall be for terms ending, I would like it to entertain a motion for it to say June thirtieth, period. So erase July thirty-first or until new members are appointed, and the terms end June thirtieth, period, yes? That means that there will be no subcommittee members on July first. Yes, that means that there will be no subcommittee members on July first. Citizen, citizen members, correct. There will be no subcommittee citizen members on July first. And when a chairman appoints the subcommittees and they go to review the subcommittee members, there will be no citizen members. There will be just three council members, which, it was a discussion at the last general government subcommittee meeting about who should be on there and who should be choosing. This way, there will be three members and only three members of that subcommittee to start the year. And that'll be it until they appoint new ones. And then the terms will end June thirtieth. No, or until new members are appointed, just strike July thirty-first and, or until new members are appointed and put June thirtieth.
Wait, wait, June thirtieth?
Correct. So moved by Counsel Marquetti, second by Counsel Dow. And discussion, Mr. Clemmons?
Yeah, discussion, yeah. So the reason, cause I remember when this, and this didn't, this witness or come from me or something, this just came up because, first off, you know, of members and such. But it also came for, for, um, hmm, what do you call it, uh, longevity? But it gave a chance for new counselors, especially who might be put on subcommittees or whatever, to interact with those members, citizen members at that point, who have some value to add to any still existing issues, or pending issues, I should say. So, you know, a council, council forms new and you get three new members potentially, now you split up your, your committees. And it was just nice to have some sort of consistency, and that's why they went to the thirty-first of July instead of June. Um, and now that we actually, we also, what did we do? They moved their, we moved their, moved council. Council doesn't even exist now until, uh, July first, well, July fir- right, so the.
First working day of the month.
First work, first Monday, yes, first Monday in July. So the point was that way, if you had still things pending and needed meetings, it just had some more consistency of members. And there were times when we didn't have enough member, like a counselor didn't make it, counselor was sick, the counselor had other things to do, couldn't make a meeting. Just saying. That's why they picked July thirty-first. As far as until new members, that's because they figured if the new, if the old member wanted to stay on until they got a new member, but, I mean, that, that point, whatever, that's a moot point. But the July thirty-first, there was a reason for it, because the June thirtieth, that when they were doing it, was a problem going forward. There was just no, or there was very little, there was very little wiggle room for having, um, people deal with the problems that still existed beyond. There, there was no follow-up, carryover, I should say, I don't know what you want to call it. So that's the reason.
Thank, thank you for your concern. Um, Counsel Marquetti.
What was the problem that we had this year? Wasn't it that we were trying to appoint new members, but the old members' term had not ended yet? And the term would not end until July thirty-first?
Right.
So now we had an extra member, we had too many members.
We did actually have too many members, because at the twenty-fourth meeting, full council appointed a bunch of members to various subcommittees. Some of them said effective immediately, some of them said August first on that agenda. And, and in the end, it added for a lot of confusion and.
But that was the mistake on the agenda, that the agenda items were written incorrectly because they didn't.
But they were ready, they were ready to be put on there. And since, since July thirty-first, you couldn't, warrant to them November.
Unless somebody resigned.
Right, so this way, this way, if the council's ready on July twenty-fourth and they want to have subcommittee on July twenty-seventh, they can have the new members on board, because you don't have to wait till July thirty-first. Cause warrant till new members appointed allows this person to stay past July thirty-first, which we're trying to eliminate that. And, and this amendment is going to eliminate that, so that there's just counselors until they appoint new citizen members.
So regardless of what you do, it's an appointment to a certain time. Just because a mistake was made, because somebody didn't read the date and could have then just appointed the people at the right time, that was just a mistake that was made by putting immediately. We should never put immediately. Also, the staggered term situation on the quasi-judicials, you are supposed to specifically put, um, what the term is, one year, two year, three year. Just saying. I know, I'm just mentioning it, though. You have to just read some of the documents, especially that one that was in the charter.
Well, I, I mean, she makes a good point, but why don't we just send it up and let the council decide?
Right. Um, Counsel Adams, did you have your hand up?
I was gonna talk about another item, like, why are you guys discussing that?
No, I mean, I don't have much more to say about this. Anyone have, anything else to say about this?
Is this conflict with the charter?
No, this is citizen.
This is just the citizen members of subcommittees.
No, I understand.
No, there's nothing in charter.
You know what, we talked about these part where it says you can stay on until somebody's qualified.
That's not for citizen members of subcommittees. That's for commissions and boards and committees recommended by the town manager. Thank you, though, I've, that's a good point, um, to, to double check. Um, so for that, for right now, we have that amendment. Um, Counsel Adams?
Thank you. So last year, we as a council, except for maybe what, one, I think, uh, Artie and George, we voted last year on the last rule, which was number twenty-three. The whole purpose behind that, that I explained at the time, was for accuracy and to make sure that the new town councils were actually reading the rules and regulations before they got into play. So they understood that though they could look at the charter, there's more details when it comes to our own rules and regulations. So this one is the number twenty-three, Southbridge Town Council, rules and regulations shall be discussed, reviewed and voted on for accuracy at the first regulation schedule, town council, annually. The whole purpose behind that was just for accuracy. And then if the general gov or a chair wants to put up an ad hoc committee or something like that and discuss rules and regulations again, whatever they may be, that they can do that throughout the year. But this year, it was postponed. It was brought back to the subcommittee to review. So if, if we're gonna do that every year, that's what we're looking at for every single year, you might as well just get rid of that whole part in there. Uh, because now we're already in August, this is supposed to be voted on just for accuracy last month. Doesn't mean that we can't change it down the road. We have changed it in the middle of the year before. So either delete it or follow it, one or the other, but, you know, that's, I think that's the whole thing.
Okay, then let, let me speak to that. Um, I wouldn't mind voting on this current amendment to have that amendment added. We could make in another amendment to strike this. And I will say, chalk it up to interpretation, I know you and I had this discussion, but the council rules and regs were discussed, they were reviewed, and they were voted on at the first meeting. It was voted to refer, there was a vote taken and it happened. And so I read it as the rules were followed. But if you would like to, if you would like to make a motion to delete it, I'd like to vote on this first motion before we add that. Um, uh, so back to the first rule four A, I believe it was.
You know what, I, I, I will leave it alone.
Okay.
Leave it that, the way it goes. You know, as long as it's brought up, it's on the agenda at the first meeting every year.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much. Um, Ms. Clemmons?
So the problem, when this was first on the agenda here again, too, I wasn't quite, I thought you were gonna actually repeat it, cause it said review them, not just have one thing that you picked out, um, and have a, have a discussion amongst everybody about different things, just to review them. Um, and we did, we aren't technically. But to, to Counsel, uh, Counselor Adams's point, I think that's, that's a great idea. I'm not certain, I would have not personally thought the first regularly scheduled meeting, because honestly, again, you may have three new counselors who may not have even picked up the rules and regs, except that they got it in the pack up from the town clerk perhaps. Um, and so that makes it a little bit challenging to have even kind of got the flavor of what being on council is. So that might be a little early for doing that. And secondly, I would be hesitant to want to change things. Oh, let's change this today and change that next week and change something else next month. It should be reviewed, you should look it over for accuracy. And if it's gonna be a change, it's once, because they print a lot of these. You know, I mean, well, they print, you know, you're, you're printing. And if we change one rule now and then change another rule next week, and then in a month, another rule, we're printing more rules and regulations to, to send out, so.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that.
You do whatever you want.
Um, so the amendment about this rule, is there any more discussion on deleting July thirty-first and/or until new members are appointed and replacing it with June thirtieth? Mr. Jovan?
So, through you, just, just to that, is there a rush to do it at this meeting? We're, we're at the end, we're in August.
Well, the rush is that, for instance, Counsel Adam says this should have been approved, a month ago, almost.
So you can see that it comes back to subcommittee, but maybe this, like Counsel Clemmons said, uh, yeah, wrong with Counsel Clemmons said. There may be other things that throughout the year, you have new councils or anything, and they come up with, hey, maybe different things and say, okay, that's on the table. Let's review over the next sixty days and come back and say, is there any, any other changes that new Counsel Shenya's new?
Right.
You know, other councils that, hey, there's new things. And we circle back and say, okay, now we have these changes and put it out to those new councils. It, it, you know, you can do that.
I, I respect, I respect where you're coming from, uh, but the council and the subcommittee has had plenty of time, uh, to review this since Ju- since it was announced on July tenth that was going to go back to subcommittee. And I think there's, um, a motion on the table to make one change. Um, the council could change these ten times a year if they felt like it. And I think that doesn't, just the fact that in the future, we might want to take your advice and look it over for a sixty-day period for something else, doesn't mean we should stop, um, doing what we're doing now, uh, to, to prepare for something that might happen in the future. There's a change that wants to be made now, and we should vote on it or recommend that we make no changes right now. Uh, because it does need to get approved, uh, according to the rule twenty-three, is it? Um, Counsel Dow, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, so, so we have a specific time to have that approved, certain day, or we still have time?
No, no, the way it was written and rule twenty-three, the, these, these are always in effect, okay? But it just says that it will be discussed, reviewed and voted on for accuracy at the first meeting, which we did discuss and review, and we voted to refer it to subcommittee. So this, this is in effect. The, this is completely ineffective. We're just reviewing it for accuracy back at subcommittee is what we chose to do instead of, instead of approval at the first meeting. So after reviewing it here at subcommittee, the only change that I can find, and I'm well open to as many changes as anybody would like to make, um, is this change with the dates, so we don't have the, uh, confusion again in the future. Uh, but there is no sort of like, uh, rule, there's no charter telling us to breathing down our necks to get this done or whatever. But this is just one, this is, this is the amendment, this is, uh, this is it.
I would recommend they update the, uh, rules on the town's website, because they have.
We can, we can tell them that. Um, Counsel Adams?
So, based on how we wrote it and approved it and discussed it, you know, we're already past that timeline. It, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, I, I kind of agree with Ms. Clemmons or even, uh, uh, Mr. Jovan, you know, if, I had, I know you had that one amendment, but maybe at the next general gov, review it one more time, see if there's anything said. You can bring it back up every few months. Maybe we can knock it out one time, we won't see it again until next year.
Okay, we can, we can always.
We have plenty of time based on your amendment for the, the subcommittee members.
We could, yeah, we can, we can review it again. Like I said, council has the ability to vote on this ten times this year, make ten changes if they feel like it. So I'm not really looking to the future to disrupt tonight. Um, and I'm, I'm more than happy to have it on future agendas as, as anybody sees fit. Um, is there any other discussion on the amendment? Ms. Clemmons?
You said we had lots of time. I would just like to point out that, uh, I thought there would be a meeting on Monday and it wasn't until I, didn't get a notification and then I saw there was a special meeting and then got an email saying there was a meeting Wednesday night without any other indication, to which I then picked up a packet yesterday from the office and asked them to print it out. So I disagree respectfully with the idea that we've had plenty of time to review.
And you didn't watch the July tenth meeting?
No, I did not.
Oh, okay, my, my mistake.
Yeah.
My mistake.
And, and I haven't been on council, so I don't follow the rules and regs now. I would also, in the future, if we could start doing something different, and I've asked this in the past, this amendment stuff, when we make amendments, could we please leave strikeouts of what was, so that there's history to follow? Because in the past, it's very difficult to follow history as to why we took something out or put something in. Um, and sometimes you, people tend to put things back in that they took out, and then they take out things that they put back in. And I'm just saying, oh, this is what we did, but if it was marked, instead of this amendment thing, which means nothing, because unless you can find an old one, you don't know what they did, except they deleted, 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 or added, you don't even know it was new. So I would, I would like us to follow like state, the way the state does it, where you do a strike. And in the future, just saying, you know, you leave it in with a strikeout and the new, the new language. I think that would be really helpful for future counselors.
Right, cause you, there are some things in rule four that just says deleted.
Right.
In the twenty seventeen.
And I used to, yeah.
And you were, yeah.
For, even when I came on as council and it'd be deleted, and I'd go and see the town clerk and say, do you have an old copy? Do you have before that? I guess somewhere in the notes somewhere it exists, but honestly, that's happened with charter even. You know, I'd go back to three charters ago, luckily, sometimes that exists, but I'm just saying.
No, that's a good point. Thank you.
Just saying.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment? No further discussion, all those in favor, opposed?
I'm opposed because I feel we should do it all at once.
Thank you. So it's three to one on the amendment. Now the main motion is to review and discuss town council rules and regulations, entertain a motion to approval with this amendment now for the changes. Well, it's, it's there, but thank you. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present? And finally.
No, I was opposed.
I'm sorry, three to one.
We didn't.
Thank you very much. It's, uh, been a bit. Agenda item number six, review, discuss, propose, transfer policy and entertain a motion to recommend to town council for approval. Second, second? Thank, thank you. Um, does anybody want to speak to this before me? Uh, because this is something that we have spoken about, uh, every subcommittee meeting at the end of the year. There's some transfers that we could have avoided, there should be some sort of transfer policy. There's a lot of arguments about whether there should be or shouldn't be. But, um, I know that this is something that Counsel Adams was really big on, um, and if, I didn't know if you wanted to present anything before I took questions, Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Chair, just to you, you know, we, since two thousand and eighteen, I know, uh, Ms. Clemmons was the chair at the point in time, I believe it was, so please. But you spoke, I mean, no, but they, they came up with a transfer policy. It was not a bad idea to come up with a transfer policy, because the, uh, perfect example, this year, what do we have? Some transfers for thirty bucks, we brought somebody away from their family for thirty bucks.
Seven dollars.
And we, just, I just want the council to understand, we vote on their budget every freaking year. Every year, we vote on, we say, okay, this is the deal. The only thing I'm not asking for, uh, uh, at this point in time is obviously, between departments, it has to go to the town council. That's part of the charter, that's, uh, that's, that's something that's, um, you know, most towns follow. But also, most towns follow that if I get a hundred thousand dollars a year in my budget, and I got it, I got multiple line items from, from paying, uh, other towns or subscriptions or salaries and stuff like that. I am allowed as an employee to be able to move those around. Obviously, I can't do that by myself. I have to have the authority of the financial director and the town manager at the same time to review it. But it never goes to the select board or to the town council for ultimate approval. So, and I understand what the charter states, the charter states specifically in there that the town council has the oversight of the finances. And I got that. But we also delegate it, i.e., we delegate the subcommittee, just, we, we, long discussion, of making decisions for the town council, even though out of the five, there's two individuals that are citizen members. So we delegate these authorities. So to me, I'd be open to any type of transfer policy that, that the town council could provide. If it's five thousand, if it's unlimited, if it's a thousand, whatever it may be, I'm leaving it in the general gov's hands to have that discussion. But I, I gotta tell you, we pay these people good money, and don't be wrong, there are a number of stakes that have been made. But I, and one thing I would recommend that the town accountant or the finance director would provide a monthly transfer update. You know, so I think, we already set legal precedents under another council back in eighteen, seventeen, eighteen. So it's okay to do, we're allowed to do it. Um, but, you know, I, I just want to throw it out there to the council and, and citizen members to see what your thoughts are on this, because that's one of the biggest thorns around here, is thirty-dollar transfers.
Thank you, Counsel Adams. I appreciate it. Um, Counsel Marquetti first?
Okay, thank you, through you. So just looking over the Southbridge Town Con, the, uh, town charter. Uh, two, four, one, except as otherwise provided in this charter, all general corporate legislative policymaking and appropriation powers of the town shall be vested in the town council. Two, four, two, the council may enact bylaws and other measuring rules, regulations, not inconsistent with this charter. So then we go to chapter ten, section twelve, transfer appropriations. At any time during the fiscal year, the town council may, upon recommendation of the town manager through the finance director, transfer part or all of any unencumbered appropriation balances among programs within a department, office or agency and may transfer part or all of any unencumbered appropriation balances from one department, office or agency another. So in my opinion, only the council has the authority to make transfers. Now, when you look at Robert's Rules, Robert's Rules ranks are different ranking rules. First is the town charter, that's number one, that's what you have to follow. Second would be time, town bylaws. Third, special rules of order and standing rules created to accomplish a specific purpose. Robert's Rules would be fourth and the fifth would be custom. Robert's Rules would be fourth, and the fifth would be custom. We've always done it that way in the past rule. But that leads to all written rules, so ambiguous. Well, Robert's Rules cover is something that's in, that's ambiguous. When a when a law is subject to interpretation, or interpretation can be made that creates a conflict with another bylaw. When a bylaw authorizes a specific privilege, no privilege greater than one. No interpretation can be made that creates a conflict with another law or bylaw. So when you're doing, to my opinion, to make a policy now. That contradicts section, chapter ten, section twelve on transfers and appropriation, which only gives the council the authority to make transfers. That is creating a conflict. If you want to change it, then in my, this is my opinion, you need to change the charter first, then you can do it. That's fine, but my own opinion, creating a policy that conflicts with it is not allowed. So that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Counsel Marketti. Um, I heard this argument before, and. The charter, as many have said before, is something that is left up to interpretation, and then the way I interpret it is that in chapter ten. It says the council may transfer. And in chapter two, four, one, and two, four, two, it does say that all appropriation powers. And it does say not inconsistent. Now, all appropriation powers doesn't just mean the power to appropriate money. In my interpretation, and this is just my interpretation, it means that it is also the power to create a policy. Now you go back to two, four, two. Where I believe you're saying that a policy would be inconsistent with ten, twelve, one. In my opinion, the po- the ten, twelve, one doesn't say that the council can't make a policy. It doesn't say that. The council doesn't have the power to delegate these things. It, there there's really no. Clear evidence that shows that you totally cannot do this. It's it's inconclusive. To the point to defending your argument, in my opinion, and and it is just, it's it's a different interpretation of the charter, but. I don't see a a cut and dry violation here of um the charter by creating a policy. Now, that doesn't mean to say that I'm for a policy against the policy, or how much money it should be for if I'm for it. I'm just trying to say that this ca- this council had a policy before. And I just simply personally do not interpret this as being a violation if the council wants to create a policy. It says they have the powers. The oversight. It's it it, there there's no language in ten, twelve, one that says it's gonna be inconsistent if you create a policy. It just says that we may transfer. Um, so. I mean, I I hope both of our arguments are clear to everybody so that we can understand that the, this is the principle of of the policy, not. The policy itself and how much money it should be for, the principle of whether or not it should be made. I think these are two clear sides of the fence um for everybody to understand. Um, I see your hand up, but Ms. Clemens, did you want to, and then Counsel Shenier?
Yeah, I think I could, I could help to clarify slightly. I I think Counsel Marketti reads exactly correct. I think a word that was left out by, and I agree with your 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 standing, but I think a word that was left out that is. The most important word that Counselor Marketti read is the word unencumbered. It said unencumbered. The definition of unencumbered, having few or no burdens or impediments, free of debt or financial liability. So, we encumber when we have our budgets and we give money to, and we vote on that budget, we encumber that money. We have get, put a financial liability on that money. It's for a budget of a certain department. Now, unencumbered money is other money that doesn't have the definite spot to be in the town. You find some extra, maybe it's a free cash, it's other things, whatever it is, I don't know, to find unencumbered money. I mean, uh, encumbered money, unencumbered money. But anyway, it was said for any, for um, you used it, the word you read, unencumbered, you can. So the money that is being transferred in a department is encumbered money. It, within that department, it's already been, it's there. It's to be able to be used within that department that you've already voted to spend. So the, uh, to have a transfer policy within a department like that, wouldn't, especially within, I guess you could do it without too, but I'm not for that. I believe department transfers between departments should definitely be something that is reviewed and 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 the Town Manager, the Council, whatever, definitely. But if it's unencumbered, um, you know, that's different. When it's encumbered, it certainly is already accounted for, and that should be used within that department. And that department head and their people. Now, can you put restrictions on that? There's where your policy comes in. I still think there should be checks and balances. We always believe that. We believe that the, there should be a finance. Um, there should be a financial report once a month. That didn't really happen back then, apparently. And we also believe that when it becomes a certain amount, because there are, you have big budgets. We've talked about this. Um, the uh overtime, for instance, things like that. I know councilors in the past have said, geez, if you're transferring twenty thousand, fifty thousand, you know, from here to there, even if it is within the. The department, something's wrong. That means that the budget maybe wasn't done, unless there's some extenuating cer- extenuating circumstances. Perhaps the budget should have been better thought out. So yes, you want to keep an eye on those things. The the Town Manager wants to keep an eye on his department heads, that they know how to make their budget, so that. The council is voting appropriately and and putting the tax taxpayer money appropriately. So to have some sort of policies about maybe large amounts, you know, makes sense. But I, but I firmly believe that if you're transferring within a department to buy a paper towel instead of toilet paper. Or to have paint instead of, you know, car wash or something, I don't know, that's just silly. It's silly to come here with. Spending money's not silly, but not giving your your people that you've hired. That are in those positions to save lives, police chief, fire chief, people like that who are in their departments and make. Very important decisions every day. If you're not giving them the benefit to to not have to come to these meetings on a constant basis to get some little transfer done. That's just impeding, that's impeding progress in this community. That's impeding good business in this community and and efficiency and working, so. Anyway, I agree that there should be a policy. It should be something very simple, and it shouldn't, will not, will not. Violate charter, because we're talking the difference between unencumbered funds and encumbered funds, and that's where the difference is.
I'm gonna, thank you so much. I'm I'm gonna move to Counsel Shenier, but I did wanna to clarify that it wasn't the unencumbered was the problem. It was the not. Inconsistent in in the argument that making a policy is inconsistent with ten, twelve, one, because ten, twelve, one says council does it. And and he he's interpreting it that two, four, two would be, it it's saying it's inconsistent to make that policy. And and I I disagree with that argument, but that's where the confusion lies.
It's not inconsistent, because it talks about un- unencumbered, unencumbered funds. These are encumbered funds. That that specifically states that the council does the, you know, is is responsible for unencumbered funds. That's, it's, so by by allowing a transfer policy, those are encumbered funds, because the council's already voted to let that department have that money. That's what I'm saying. He read, he read that it, um, they have the, I don't have it in front of me, and if you could point it out, I'd appreciate that, Counsel Marketti. Um, it's in the charter, and it says, um, so you're not supposed to be inconsistent, I agree. At any time during the year, the Town Council may, upon recommendation. To transfer part or all of any unencumbered funds. What I'm telling you is by by voting on your budget. You've encumbered those funds. Those funds are get, are are specifically earmarked for something. So, so they have to, you have to now continue to vote on anything that's unencumbered, but you shouldn't have to vote again on anything that's encumbered.
People would argue that July first, everything is unencumbered, because it hasn't happened yet. Uh, that that that, the argument's been brought to me. It's not my argument.
So for month transfers must come through.
It's not my argument. The the, the argument was if the charter had been changed to say Town Manager and not Town Council, that on July first, everything's unencumbered, and the manager can redo the budget. At free will, if the charter had changed. That was the argument before. So people, there are some people who believe that all funds.
If you have a fiscal budget, that's why you have.
I understand that you can earmark things, but they're really not encumbered, so you sit down and you say, okay, putting this for this and that for that. That's another person's argument, not mine. It's, it came up during our council of all year.
But what we're talking about is, right, but generally, you're talking about the money that's been put in the budget, and they're not coming for more money. It's the money that's already in the budget that they're transferring.
I see what you're saying about this, this one. You're saying it's encumbered funds.
So unencumbered versus encumbered. Right, so charter's specific to this.
Such as?
Such as.
What, what unencumbered funds are you talking about?
Well, she's.
Like, you know, free cash or whatever, or money that you found, because treasurer didn't do something.
How much do they, how many times do they come to us for the transfer of unencumbered funds?
They wouldn't have to.
Right.
You're making.
They always come to us for a transfer within these departments, so they.
Because you're making them. That's what I'm trying to.
They may be in there, but they haven't been encumbered yet. That's my only, I don't know.
But they're encumbered. The minute you vote your budget and give a department the money, it's encumbered.
All right, I I see your argument.
It's it's already out of your control. You can't take that money back from them at that moment unless you, I don't know what you need from the budget. At the end of the year, maybe, right? If there's extra.
If they don't need a transfer policy, then either.
So.
Well, no.
You don't really need a transfer policy, it's all.
You could, you could still say that we still don't agree that they should be, you know, council can make a transfer policy. It says they can.
I don't get it.
But it says they can.
I'm not on Georgia.
That's, I said, if you feel better about the bigger numbers, then you can have a transfer policy, and you have the right to do something. But you don't, but it's not, you're making it mandatory that they come in.
Okay, so I I, it seems like we're we're off the, that fence, and we can maybe move on to the argument about the transfer policy. I I'm gonna go to Shenier, but. Counsel, I mean, Mr. Jovan has something to directly, if you don't mind. Okay, and then Counsel Shenier.
If the council, so. In their wisdom. Pursues this financial management study. They're gonna take a look at our charter, we're gonna look at our policies, they're gonna look at all that stuff. Why don't we include that within that? They'll look at our financial practices. And our charter and our bylaws, and perhaps they'll come up with a recommendation that says, hey, it's not inconsistent with the charter, or it is, that you have to do it because of the charter. But they'll look at all our bylaws, all our charter, all our financial practices. They may have a better idea of what we can do legally or not legally.
Not a bad idea.
Thank you.
Because we're at the beginning of the year, so if we do this at the beginning of the year, okay, we might, we might have a couple of transfers here and there. But we get that done, some practices in, and then they give a recommendation for what is a sound transfer policy, if it is allowed.
Right, the transfer policy won't be hugely beneficial until the second half of this year, so it it could be something that. We postpone until we have more information about, from that audit, but um, thank you for your recommendation. I appreciate it. Uh, Counsel Shen- Shenier, and then I can go to Town Accountant.
I guess it's kind of like an interpretation of incumbent and unencumbered funds. When we form the budget and we give a department, it becomes incumbent. That, that budget, but within that budget is line items. And when that line item runs out of money, the lack of having money in there and transferring it over becomes unencumbered. So, I think by having incumbent and unencumbered, and when the transfer request is, you're taking funds from an incumbent. Budget and putting it into a line item that ran out of money, I still think. Charter is clear and specific, and it says where the transfer appropriation is. I I agree that we should follow guidance from Mr. Jovan and and suggest that you table this. And find out what just the audit does, because it's gonna be somebody's interpretation of what is incumbent and what is unencumbered, and what is it. What the transfer, what ten, twelve says. I think if we put that, what Mr. Jovan says, I think it'd be good. Good for council to get an opinion from the department of, I guess it's I I G R, local services to. And and I think there'll be more clarification, and you'll be able to act better and, you know, up with judgment, instead of everybody having, we all got a different opinion of it, so it tells them something. There's something wrong here. So I I would suggest.
I got it. No, I appreciate it.
Uh, table it, why don't we just postpone it?
Yeah, you should.
Right.
Understood, but let's, um, the accountant wanted to add something, and so did Counsel Adams.
Well, from my office, there's also a difference between encumbered, unencumbered, and allocated.
Al, right, that's the word.
So allocated is another verbage, because budget's allocated, and encumbered funds means you reserve something on a particular floor. So I've also got a different interpretation of these as well. Um, but I also did want to point out. Um, in the agenda items with regards to the verbage, and also the verbage in the charter of that, I, what is it? Was it ten point twelve? Um, they both reference a finance director. We don't have a finance director.
Correct.
So that verbage would need to be updated to Town Accountant or Finance Director. Um, the last time the town was without, the the last time the town of Southbridge was without a finance director. Was early two thousands, and I believe both these rules and regs and the Town Charter have both been revised since then.
Understood. Uh, Counsel Adams.
That brings up a really good point about that maybe Finance Director or Accountant, we understand what happened in the two thousands with that whole issue, but also in here. You know, if we're gonna have to change the charter, let's just say they come back and they say, uh, we're reading it correctly, or whatever it may be. Maybe there needs to be verbiage in the charter that says the Town Council cannot delegate. Its authority, even though it still has the authority, but cannot delegate, or it can delegate the authority with proper oversight of whatever it may be.
To give clarity.
I don't see anything in here that says I can't delegate, we can't delegate our authority. We do it every day.
Well, I'm just talking about the rules.
I understand that that, you know, layman's terms.
Yeah.
Thing is.
Why are we going to have this up then?
And to, if you're responding to that, Mr. Jovan, and then Ms. Clemens, then I'd like to entertain.
Yeah, no, it just goes back to the charter, because if you go back to the original frames of the charter, the charter was specific when it came to transfers, was the Town, Town Manager. Transfer.
In the beginning.
And then Finance Department set up a process by which they reported to the Council, right? I I've done some research, because we, this has been up, and I looked at it again today, that at some point, that verbage was changed. Now, when you look at the acts of two thousand sixteen. For the charter changes that were made.
Yeah.
There was nothing about uh the transfer policy. So it goes back to the uh, the last charter commission that did.
O two, maybe?
Well, I don't have it with me, but we have that whole paper.
But then when you look at that management letter, it it doesn't say, it says that they wanted the the council, so everybody goes back and, I know. Mr. Smith used to say that, put the uh, the mind of what the the people that were writing this were. It said that they want, the council wanted to have uh more control of the appropriation policy. But it was more to the ability to raise the budget, decrease the budget. And I'm not sure where that language, I haven't been able to find it yet, where it went to the town as a, a voting document. That said, this was what we spelled out, and this is why. So that's just food for thought that at one time, the charter did allow just the Town Manager to do it. I'm not opposed to council oversight, but there has to be a balance, and perhaps we could get an answer through through the uh analysis that we have done.
Makes sense to wait for the analysis. Uh, Ms. Clemens, do you have anything to add? Cuz I.
Yeah, so, no, to 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 your comments, thank you. Having served a year and a half on Charter Committee, we, and if you pull out the document. The very big document with the red and all the information that did look at two charters, you get, you know, original charter, next change, multiple change, some sort of change, no change. There were, there's good explanation of all of that in there, and that's how we came up with perhaps changing charter to be a specific um line with then saying. Uh, council to be able to do a policy, you know, there was a, there was the the oversight component to it, and then with that. But it is my understanding in all our efforts and our research that we did, the change happened in charter as sort of a knee jerk reaction to a bad manager.
Correct.
It's a bad manager doing whatever with it, with money and such, and.
Correct.
Council changes charter, i- in hindsight, you don't change charter because of one, because charter's supposed, you addressed the problem, right, and they didn't, and.
It adjusts the problem.
So they changed charter, and that's where we've been at ever since, but again, going back. We didn't go back to these transfer issues until it was brought up, what, in seventeen or eighteen, or whatever it was just before I left, and that's when we. So people had their concerns. We came up with a slight policy. We talked to lawyers who said we weren't out of our our scope, but in order to. To, we thought in order to appease, appease or or allay the concerns of others, this is why, he said, well, if you really want to make sure. You do this little adoption every year. I know that's when you came on, Mr. Jovan, and it was very clear in in the vote that would have been taken, which was. The Town Council acknowledges and understands its obligations to the financial oversight as outlined in the Home Room Charter, two, four, one, two, whatever. Therefore, without relinquishing any authority or duties provided within the S H R C, but rather exercising the executive powers bestowed by the S H R C. The Southridge Town Council puts forth the following budget appropriation policy regarding interdepend- interdepartmental transfers. And that's where, now whether the transfer policy was what anybody liked, but what the lawyer had suggested was, look, once a year when you do your budget. Voted in. Voted every year, voted every year, and that way each council every year takes on the onus of, we've allowed it to happen. Um, and that was one way, but then that fell through, and ever since then, you've been having these for transfers. So, just saying. But I still don't believe we needed that. I think unencumbered, encumbered. But I still don't believe we needed that. I think unencumbered, encumbered is clearer.
There's a good motion to postpone it then.
Yeah.
Uh, till, until after the financial management review.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion to second to postpone until after the financial management review. No further discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Yeah, and Mr. Val, present. Um, we're off, the item Miss Farland, um.
I know, I, through you, I, I need to discuss something, because I have an August thirty first deadline.
I can't discuss it on this, that, that's not how.
Can I, can it be added to the trash subcommittee, so I can present a proposal, because it needs to sign off and be proposed? Um, so, because I'm.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rule and, uh?
Because you didn't anticipate her coming forward, let's hear what she has to say.
I haven't heard about this from anybody, I mean.
Okay, so.
Make a motion, suspend the rule to here.
If I could just have three minutes, okay? I was approaching.
It's not, you, could I just say from a legal standpoint, if you don't anticipate someone coming forward, and it's an emergency, you get to listen to it. Doesn't mean we have to take action.
Yeah.
I understand. I understand. I understand.
But we can, we can make a motion.
We don't have to even have a motion, you just ask, you know, she wants to speak, it's up to the, you know, up to you to let her speak.
If, if you want a motion to suspend the rules to put an item, discuss something we don't even know about on the agenda, that's up to you, but I'll be voting no.
I wanna know what it is. I wanna know what the motion is, you gotta suspend the rules.
To listen to her, what she was saying.
Or can you just let her talk?
Let her talk, we don't have to discuss it, let her talk.
I just don't understand why the town manager, I haven't heard of this before until about, until eight forty-eight, it doesn't make sense.
Does it really matter how this happens? Let's find out why.
I, 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 I think she could say, I have this issue I'd like the subcommittee to look at and address and schedule another meeting.
Correct.
And that's it, not discuss it? She's well within her room to say, I just have this issue, it came up, just wanna bring it to your attention, could you put it on a meeting as soon as possible?
That, that's why we have a meeting.
So that we can.
All right, so how would I do this? Agenda item, agenda item number ten, future agenda and upcoming meetings. Ms. Farland, would you like to add something to that?
I would like, I would like to request through the chair that a, an agenda item be added at the next subcommittee meeting to discuss the trash um, software update regarding MIMUS, as there is a quote that was submitted to my department, had two of them, the first one expired. The second one, I don't know where it stands, but it expires August thirty first, and it is for me to have training, based on training with an IAC, someone who's had a tech, unless you wanna pay for customized software, um, that, so I can do the trash setup and build. I told this subcommittee and EA, uh, the other one, trash, I was eighty-five percent there to do it. But I have not received a GL, no offense, the GLs for this system. The town manager came to my boss and said it's on hold, because the trash committee does, I don't know what was said, but I have not received the GLs. On April tenth, I was told by Tyler Support, no GLs, no testing, no bill. So I cannot even test, I can't set up one code, I can't do anything without GLs. So, and I have to use, to do the import, I have to use another town's import file from New Hampshire to do it. Whether we have to pay for that, I don't know. I'm just saying, it needs to be discussed now, because I, they booked six months out for training. The two people I need to work with, six months, we're now August.
Understood.
We cannot bill in March if I'm not able to book time with that.
Understood, we'll have to talk to the town manager about why, uh, he wanted to put that on hold and get that moving again.
No, so.
Okay, um, I will.
Right now, I am not eighty-five percent, I'm back to three percent.
Thank you.
So, to do, be able to do it.
Thank you.
In the queue.
All right. Next on the future upcoming meetings, I just wanted to point out the subcommittee meeting minutes in Otter AI. Uh, we've spoke a couple of different meetings before. Otter AI is a service that can transcribe videos. Um, I plan to sign up for a free version of that and try sending the first general's, uh, government subcommittee meeting through that, see how it works, see if I can, uh, make my minutes successfully with that, and then you know, hopefully at the next meeting, I can share those results in the meantime with the town managers, obviously you can figure out a way to put that on the agenda. Um, so that the whole five subcommittees, or any boards and commissions really could use this. It's actually not very expensive, and it was recommended by, um, Councilor Adams at first. Um, Councilor Marquetti?
Uh, through you, to Councilor Adams, I signed up, I signed up for audit this morning, cause I saw this on here. I ran a subcommittee meeting through it. What it came back to me is, I would have to go through that entire thing and create and correct almost every sentence, because it is not very accurate, it doesn't understand a lot of the words. I will, and I can share it with you too.
Oh, I, I get all the time. So my whole purpose behind that was, because we heard from people, minutes, not being done.
Yeah, I think we need to take a verbiage.
Chairman used to do it themselves.
This, this is a pretty easy, like, where you can cut and paste if you need to, just in case you forget.
I would have to, you would have to go through the entire, it'd take you longer to go through that than just to take some, an outline of your minutes.
That's fine.
All right, just so I like.
I'll still report back.
I'll send it to you.
I'll still, thank you, I appreciate that, I'd love to see.
You can't provide a cheap version.
And then, um.
It's a free version, that's what I tried.
Thank you. I, I'll let you know how, what I get, I'll send it to you, you send me yours, we'll, we'll check it out together. Um, the next meeting date is August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Why don't you do it, Jer?
Thank you.
Someone.
All those in favor? Thank you, you have Mr. Val present.